Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
SCTV's live coverage of Falmouth Select Board meetings is brought to you in part by John's Liquors, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Strategic Planning Session of the Falmouth Select Board into Saturday, August 24, 2024. It is exactly nine o'clock, and I would ask that you please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So you can see we have a full agenda, and included in this agenda are certain items that were submitted to me for consideration to be brought up today, and when we get to those, I will send them over to the people that submitted them to just begin the conversation. But I would like to start with a review and update of the strategic plan. Everybody has a copy at their desk, and I think we should go through it. Adding to the strategic plan is the mission, vision, and value statements that we have. You should have a copy of that with your strategic plan. We will be adding that in.
I'd just like one comment on that sheet. Nancy just mentioned we inserted a copy of what was adopted by the Board a couple of months ago with a change that I want to bring to the Board's attention. In working with our HR Director Susan Lumping, Peter and I, one of the aspects of the strategic plan I want to talk to you about this morning is incorporating some more diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging into the strategic plan. There's not a lot of mention of it in the plan. So Susan, Peter, and I think that that's very important. So I asked Susan Lumping to take a look at what was then our mission, vision, and core value statement, and she drafted what you'll see included is a value statement, kind of that third category down on the sheet right after vision statement. So take a look at that. I think it's, and here's the last comment that I'll stop on with regards to the mission, vision, core value, and value statement. I think this is foundational, and most strategic plans, organizations start with that mission and vision, and they kind of build the plan around that. It's, I think we have a strong strategic plan and just kind of did this towards the end of the process. But anyway, I think it's important that we incorporate this document into the larger strategic plan documents, and that's what we need.
So this is added, the value statement? Is that correct?
That is correct. The value statement is new, wasn't part of the originally adopted mission, vision, and core value statement with some provisions that were made based on the Select Board input. This is very close in.
I was just going, that was my question. So because it was voted once already, do we need to re-vote?
So here's what I suggest. Because this is a workshop, we don't take any form action. What I suggest, if you recall, the last time we visited and revised the strategic plan was in August of last year, and we adopted that, as you can see on the front page, of all of those changes based on the August workshop on October 16th. So I suggest we do the same kind of process. So if the Board is, we can bring this back to an October regular Select Board meeting for formal adoption, including inserting this mission, vision, and value statement into the strategic plan with any other changes that might arise.
And I agree with you, but we voted this separately, correct?
Yes, this document was.
And I'm just wondering that since we, since you're proposing an amendment to it, we might want to bring it back to the Board to re-vote it because it's different.
We will do that.
If anybody doesn't see that that's an issue, that's okay, but I'm not sure that I'd want to just fold it in without a separate vote. We don't have to wait till October. We have to wait, you know, for the strategic plan to come back, or we might want to look at this again and re-vote it.
And I could bring it in a regular meeting. This is a draft, this is a draft. So I'll bring it back at one of the upcoming meetings, maybe in September.
That's fine. So if anyone has any, go ahead, Mr. Scally.
Thank you. The one thing that I would mention, Mike, in the value statement where it says that the Town of Falmouth strives to be inclusive, welcoming, equitable, and diverse, I think employer is probably, I think what you might want to say is community, because, and then it goes on to, you know, talk about basically community aspects, not as an employer. You know, I know probably it's Susan's the first thought is employer, but I think community would be a better word.
Okay, we will make that sound. Bring it back to it.
Yeah, I guess I was struggling with something similar, but maybe landed in a different place. Like I understand from the capital Town of Falmouth perspective, the value statement as an employer, it's, I was thinking something in the second half, right? There's providing the highest level of customer service to all individuals and groups, but maybe keeping that distinction of employer and how we foster a diverse and equitable, right? Like things that were coming up for me were things like, and this is not necessarily value statement, right? But like equitable application of rules and regulations, just how do we foster a just and diverse community more broadly through the actions of the Town of Falmouth? And I think that goes a little bit beyond customer service.
And I do think we should leave employer only because it is our responsibility, Mike's responsibility as the employer who employs everyone, to make sure that this happens. So if you want to get any notes or any suggested changes, if you could just send them to Mike and me, that would be great. We'll get another draft out and we'll re-vote.
And again, I wanted to get this in front of you all this morning as part of this workshop, planning session, and then as a draft, and sorry, I didn't have the draft watermark on it, but, and then take these comments, and then during, like I said, working basis, September, bring this back to you, and then kind of go through the.
To refine the language.
Yeah.
Exactly. And then we'll vote it, and then we can leave it into the strategic plan. Okay. Everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at the strategic plan and what our defined goals are, and I'm wondering if anybody had any additions, deletions, suggestions just right off the top.
Did we, I didn't really notice it, but did we take out all the references that we've opened up?
No, we haven't, and I think it's something we want to talk about.
Okay, I think we took out a bunch of them though, didn't we?
I thought we had designed that.
A while ago.
A while ago, but there's still a couple.
Okay.
I appreciate bringing that to my attention. We'll go back through this, go back and remove it from the references. And I may be wrong, I was on a day of looking at the strategic plan too, comparing, so I might. This is the version that's posted on the website currently that was adopted back in mid-October of last year, right? Based on the August of last year.
Right in housing, the second sentence, the second paragraph, affordable housing crisis has been exacerbated by.
It is.
Yep.
I'll make note of that.
And then, but it has been, you know, and maybe we don't need it at this point, but it certainly did make it worse, but we can look at that.
Well, yeah. We'll bring back all of the comments as we go through all seven of the sections and list the elements, and we'll bring all of those back, and again, probably in an October meeting for formal adoption. But I'll include that as a draft strike in that, in the broad discussion. I also wanted, as you're looking through this, I also wanted to mention one thing with regards to the strategic plan, that this literally, I mentioned, you know, I used the kind of navigation theme. This usually, this does literally set the milestones and all markers that we use, that I use as the Town Manager, instilling those upon the department heads and then the line level staff. And I say that because it touches on, not coincidentally, touches on just about everything that follows on this agenda, right? There's an element of it within the strategic plan. So as you're looking through these, you know, we're going to be talking about capital planning this afternoon. What we did last year is incorporate, we asked the departments that are drafting their capital plan requests to incorporate what elements of the strategic plan that budget request touches on. So all this is interconnected, right? And this is literally the cornerstone of what we're trying to do as an organization, and this is your direction to me, as the Town Manager, how you want to proceed. So this is kind of weighty stuff, and that's why we have 60 minutes this morning to kind of go over some of that. I'm going to, and hopefully you do have some input and updates and adding, and I've got a couple too, but I want to hear from you because this is your plan.
I totally agree with you, and I think everything we do needs to be, come from this somewhere, right? And having said that, I'm wondering if we need to tighten up our goals a little bit and make them more specific and measurable and attainable. I'm just thinking of the SMART that we used to use in schools, and I'd like to really see if we can focus in on the goals and make them more specific, attainable, because then what I think that we want Mike Renshaw to do is go back to the department heads and say, well, these are the Select Board goals. These are specific, where are you as the Head of Human Services or as the Head of the TPW? Where are you in working towards those goals? And I think it also helps the departments know that this isn't something that sits on the shelf, that this is what guides us in our world. So I totally agree with you, and I think the goals produce some work.
Certainly.
Mr. Scally, Mr. Zlinski, and Mr. Brown.
My question, Mike, is will you and staff be looking at, you know, the areas that we actually have adopted and put them out as to, you know, the things that have happened? For instance, we've adopted the LIT guidelines, right, or the new procedure, which in housing is mentioned. Are you going to kind of give us, you know, where we have met the goals, you know, kind of following up on Nancy's point as well?
We are.
Are you going to do that as part of your review, getting it back to us, listing what goals we actually have attained in the past year?
If you recall, real quick.
Yeah, go.
So based on those two comments, if you recall, in August of last year, my first workshop, we talked about having a platform, a software platform that's going to allow us every quarter, every three months to kind of bring a status report back to the Select Board. I thought I was going to have that for this morning, and unfortunately, Peter and I have been working on the software. We have a great vendor, ClearPoint Strategies is the vendor that we selected after Town Meeting approved the funding for it. We're really close to launching it, and I'm hoping we're going to be able to do something in September, October, and again, report out in quarter one, so July, August, and September, sometime in, maybe the first meeting in October, I'm hoping to have that dashboard report, scorecard, they call them, that kind of shows where we're at. And to Nancy's point, yes, certainly, if you have, it's a great strategic plan, but I do think some of the goals and objectives are a little bit vague. And for the past eight months, Peter and I have been working, the Assistant Town Manager and I have been working with the departments to create the concept of performance management, so the departments have been reviewing the plan, they're now all aware of the plan, strategic plan, and they're trying to come up with key performance indicators that their departments do that tie directly to one or more of these seven strategic plan key result areas. So we're close, and I'm hoping in October to be able to present that, and that will incorporate all of the things that have been accomplished in the current plan. And then in addition, I'm hoping from this morning to get some more measurable, specific, measurable, attainable goals, one-time bound, the kind of goals. Because right now, if you look at it, and again, great plan, but if you look under the specific actionable goals, there aren't a lot of measurable.
A lot of considering.
Yes, yes, yes. So yeah, this can be a work in progress, and we're going to launch this platform I've been talking about in October and grow it. But yeah, to the extent that we have comments and input this morning, you've got to feed into this, and going forward, don't hesitate to let me know.
Oh, you want to finish up?
Just one more question. I mean, that raises the point, Michael, is what's the timeline or process for us, you know, getting this? What, you know, we want to get this in by end of October like we have in the past. I mean, just, you know, informally, what do you see as the process so that we can have that input, review it, comment, and so forth?
So I would like, again, my goal is to have a built-out dashboard scorecard, part of the software, to launch and unveil in October, one of the two meetings in October. But I really see this as a rolling process where, you know, we tweak and modify and revise, not the elements, you know, the major, the seven elements, but the goals within those. And the way this is laid out, you know, we basically, this platform has the seven key result areas, and then has initiatives up under that role, up under those seven. Each one has one or more initiatives, and then there's goals and objectives that tie directly to those initiatives. So we're trying to kind of build that framework. So to answer your question, Bob, it's going to be, I think ideally, if you have input directly as far as adding specific measurable attainables, and by mid-October, that'd be great, because we're just going to focus right now on having this thing ready to go in the second meeting in October. But I do see this as a rolling process, ongoing, continuous addition, revising the goals.
I would ask that you get your comments in September and give your office enough time to then thread it through, and for us all to look at it before it actually comes out in the public. And then we don't have to be spending a whole lot of time in the meeting wordsmithing it. So if it could be, I would back up our comments to make sure we get them in September, sometime in September.
September, that'd be fantastic.
Just simply, by way of your concerns and Bob's questions and Mike's explanation, it's going to, it's going to make it a lot less ambiguous going forward. I mean, a lot easier to understand, specific, right?
And workable.
Yeah.
It needs to be a workable document. Mr. Brown, you're up next.
I was just going to say that the housing strategy probably should change now. If we reach that 10% goal, and so we've got a goal here of, at a minimum of 100 more H3D and affordable rental units over the course of the next five years, I think that's low. We need to put up 60 to 70 per year to stay current and keep our status as, you know, in that protected status.
Safe harbor.
So that's a goal that definitely needs to change, and also I think there should be language that now we're going to be more able to work with developers and grant them funding to increase their affordability rate and increase other goals and objectives at the Town. Because they're not going to be able to come in now in number 40B and just do what they want. They're going to have to work with us.
It's going to be more of a process.
Yeah, but we still, we don't want to stop.
Right.
Affordable housing, we just need to manage it more.
And manage it differently.
Right.
Well, I agree with Doug 100%, but I think that, in my opinion, there should be some language where we would like to see using existing infrastructure as part of that buildup for affordability, because if we're at 60 a year, at a certain point, we're going to run out of room somewhere. So by way of developers knowing that we are open to, not necessarily what we went through with this round building up town, but you go to other communities in Bedford and you see other buildings that have been turned into affordable housing, that also helps with our SHI, would help with our SHI. So I think that some, some sort of language to entice people to consider that should be part of the plan.
Redevelopment rather than re-development.
Right.
You know, Main Street, just to finish up on that, Main Street's an example where we've got a lot of second floors that are going unused. Would we just find a way to incentivize that? If we sort of said, given the nod to it, that it's going to be okay, we're going to get that, sewer connection nervous, but we still hadn't really incentivized it.
And that mixed use, I mean, mixed use is puke with.
Let me go to Ms. Goldstone and then back to you. Go ahead.
I guess I'm about to process the dashboard's break, and I guess I kind of wonder in terms of the goals that we set as a Select Board, it feels like the high-level goals, maybe the initiatives are something that's very much in our wheelhouse, and then at some point there's, there's kind of a handoff to staff to say, okay, now how do we actually get this done? And a little bit of a trust and accountability function, right? To say we're setting the high level, so I guess figuring out what it is, at what level the input from us is most useful for you and your staff to then develop all the full activities and strategies and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's right. You're right. I mean, see, the initiative level where I'm really looking for that, and we have taken some liberty, staff and I, to develop the kind of the draft, to organize the tracking. So yeah, the metrics, inserts monthly and a quarterly and annual measures.
I just asked that question.
I've just messaged that, apologize. This is the first time I've used this room, so it wasn't.
We've used it before if we've ever discussed.
I'll go with that.
It's. Very distracting for me. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, that's all right.
I wish I had any trouble with that.
I hear you, yeah. I guess, yeah, I mean, specifically on housing, and I guess this is the other thing, is we have an entire housing production plan, right, that has, and I just pulled it up in front of me, seven goals and multiple pages of strategies laid out by prioritization by years, like it feels like we shouldn't be recreating the wheel when we've already got a housing production plan that we could essentially, like, let's discuss it and make sure it all looks right and is pushing in the directions that we want to, but in some ways, I would envision taking the housing production plan and cut and paste, and that's the guide for the strategic plan here, where those two should match up. I think that makes perfect sense. And to your point, Doug, goal number one there is a significantly higher unit, number, right, of at least 80 units of fourth old housing annually.
Something like that.
Continuing through 2028.
Because even though we reached a 10%, if we don't continue to produce, we fall off the.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, there is some concern that we, you know, we've reached it, but maybe we really haven't reached it, and over, you know, over the next period of time, it may actually dip below the 10%. Well, we shouldn't, you know, in our minds, think we're there and home free, because some come off, you know, the count, and then we're back under 10%.
But in this moment, the state has said.
At this moment.
We have met it, and so I think we can, but I hear exactly what you're saying. Depending on when things get completed and when permits are put.
Right, if they come off, yeah. I mean, it is an evolving thing.
It's a moving target, yes.
Which I never realized, quite frankly, until, you know, I've been involved here. So it is a moving target.
It absolutely is a moving target, but, and I think if we in good faith continue to move what we think is important for housing in town, I think we can continue to move that. And I know there are people who are saying, no, we haven't met it, and when the state says we have, that's the guideline we go by. And it's only in this moment, however. That's life. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yes, we have definitely met the state requirements. It's in understanding that that doesn't mean that 10% of our housing is de-restricted affordable housing, and that 10% number is somewhat arbitrary. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's enough affordable housing. And so one thing that I think could be a really interesting but difficult exercise for, for us would be to think about setting some goals for affordable housing that are not just tied to the subsidized housing inventory. What do we actually think would be enough rentals, enough affordable deed restricted units, enough aid restricted units to have the kind of community we want to have, not just to have 10% on the SHI?
I agree, but what I disagree with is it's not an arbitrary number. It's a state number, it's their formula. I'm not saying I agree or disagree with it.
No, but, but does that mean that it is enough affordable housing, I think is.
Yeah, and I don't think.
That's what I mean in terms of.
And I don't think it answers that question. All it says is we have met the state very, very well. That's all it means.
For purposes of 40B.
Right.
That's really the.
And that's the issue.
That's the connection.
And that's the issue. And now we're saying, okay, great, doesn't mean we throw our hands up, but I agree with Doug, that it does mean that we have more input into what meets our needs of the community and what that needs to look like.
So does the EBA in that case. It makes the developers more creative, Heather. They have to come in and sell a project to us instead of just saying, we've all heard it, well, if you don't agree with me, I'm just going to go anyway. This eliminates that. So by keeping that number sustained, it keeps your negotiation powers up.
And it doesn't mean we let go of it.
And I just want to point out also that I think we just experienced a phenomenon because when Saxon was in the pipeline, everybody knew that that was going to put us over the 10%. So all the developers in town, I don't know if you noticed how many projects came out of the woodwork this year, but I think anything that was anywhere in any pipeline had been brought forward so that they could get in before we hit that tipping point. So you've got a lot of applications in now, but next year it's going to be a drought. So we're going to have to take the lead on incentivizing and developing. So I think maybe it'd be a great target goal to think of some way to incentivize those second floor spaces that are being used.
And it also goes back to something that Bob said about if those, all those plans don't come to fruition, or depending on the timing of them coming to fruition, there the number changes. So it is really a moving target. But I go back to also what Heather said, and we don't want to let go of that goal to continue to prioritize housing, and also, you used a word, Doug, and now I can't remember what it was.
Incentivize.
Incentivize.
And if you look at the Planning Board's strategic housing, it doesn't say affordable housing, it says housing for everyone.
Yeah, I do think we should try to stay away from using the term affordable when we don't really mean just affordable as far as what the state, the state considers low income were affordable.
It becomes incendiary.
Yeah, it absolutely does. It lets people think that, well, we know what it lets people think, and it's the wrong, you know, it's the wrong thought, but, but they don't know, you know, what people who are actually involved in it understand it to be. So it is, and that's why we need to keep pushing that not affordable all the time.
Or even attainable. We moved it to attainable.
I mean, what does attainable mean?
We're actually.
I agree. But people have been struggling for years to try and come up with it. Nobody's come up with it yet. Housing for everyone.
And you know what, the, sort of a misnomer too, because as the population shifts to older, wealthier people, our average median income keeps going up, and so the target keeps moving, and so the people that are working in these low-paying jobs just get further and further away from reaching that attainable goal. So we've got a lot of ways to.
Yeah, attainable, affordable. I'm just going to remind you that it is 9:26, and we're still on our.
Madam Chair, if I could, real quickly, to summarize the affordable, the housing section of the plan, what I'm going to do is incorporate the goals and objectives within the housing production plan that Heather mentioned into this as a draft, will show it kind of as a red line update to the plan, and then bring that back to the October Select Board meeting for incorporation. Y'all do have, I meant to mention, y'all, it's part of your packet, it's out, you complete housing production plan in your packet, so you know what it refers to.
So, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just, I know we're not picking and choose, but the one section that says, you know, similar to Vail, Colorado, I mean, that doesn't tell anybody anything, you know? So maybe just expand on actually what that concept is, if it stays in.
What page do you want?
It's like number nine down on the ongoing goals, that's all.
The actual program that they adopted was Vail indeed.
Yeah, no, I know, but I don't think anybody reading this would have any idea what we're talking about.
And we put that in, right?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
I agree.
And just before we close.
Okay, I just, do you have something? I was just going to second the, the idea of making sure that we prioritize and really emphasize and here redevelopment as a priority.
I like it. I'd like, I'd like to also emphasize rentals. We've talked a lot about this town's need for rentals, and I think that is, needs to be highlighted. So I agree.
Should we set a target of, like Heather suggested, 80 units? Just to put some things down?
I think we're going to take it right out of the housing production.
Yeah, if we just, if, yeah, Mike's talking about aligning what's here with the goals and strategies in the housing production plan, then that's goal number one, right? That's goal number one in the housing production plan.
Makes sense. Are we ready? Okay, let's go.
We're good with that, right? If we leave that door open?
I think so. It's an open meeting, so we do have to have the door open.
Surprise the enterprises.
What?
Surprise the enterprises.
Yeah, no, it's a fair. Yeah, no, it's a fair question, fair point.
I hope they're not over at the tavern hall.
That's okay. Mr. Angel, let's look at energy, water conservation, and sustainability.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm sure you have comments and additions, edits as well, but Stephanie Madison, our sustainability specialist, has actually prepared a couple of edits that I wanted to run by you. I think you have copies of this in your packet. And I don't have, I'm not able to, it's on my laptop, I might have to pull through it. So I wanted to run through some suggested updates or conclusions under this energy and water conservation sustainability section, if I could. Looking at adding the language under pursue and promote energy efficiency in, right now it's new building construction, we're recommending existing and new building construction. That would be one edit I'd recommend. The fourth bullet down on that list, where it starts with explore and implement municipal sites, we're recommending that be edited to read explore and implement alternative energy townwide. Removing municipal sites, looking a bit broader, alternative energy townwide, looking at specifically solar. This is kind of a subcategory under that fourth bullet, including explore municipal school sites for rooftop, ground mounted, carport campuses, explore community solar opportunities with private and nonprofit solar developers, and encourage private land and property owners to install solar.
Doug, you've been on that for a long time.
Yeah. And again, we'll incorporate this as a draft to come back, I'm just kind of running through, giving an overview of some of the recommended changes. Stephanie is also recommending that we include a wind category under renewables. Consider well-planned, appropriate wind power. Again, so under that fourth bullet, we add solar, and then this new element of wind within the mix. We're recommending striking the, from the fifth bullet to the seventh, strike, develop programs to encourage solar energy on private property, consider ground mounted and rooftop solar installations, and explore private partnerships for renewable energy. This is kind of incorporated within those bullets.
Got it.
And the rest is, again, some cleanup as well, but I wanted to cover relatively quickly with you, again, some of the new language within. And I apologize, I don't know if that, this made it, this red line version made it into your packets this morning, but I do have, I do have this handout I can pass around if you'd like.
Well, we have Stephanie here. Can we fold number six into this conversation? Would that be okay? Number six is overview of how many large-scale solar projects we have on hold.
Well, so we certainly can, if you want to change the order of, is that what you're suggesting?
I was just wondering if, because we're talking about energy, water conservation, sustainability, and we're talking a little bit about solar, I don't know if we can fold that into this conversation.
So I'm concerned that we won't be able to get through the other five or five key focus areas if we do that.
Okay, we'll keep going then. I just wonder if that will impact this as well? If that's okay. Go ahead, we'll go to you first.
So, two thoughts and questions, and I'm really glad we've got Ms. Madison here for this, and love hearing those ideas. My two questions were around whether, kind of considering our role in supporting offshore wind development, and also whether there's anything around grid modernization and working with Eversource on that that should be included in here, and would love to also hear Ms. Madison's thoughts on either of those.
And Madam Chair, if you don't mind, have Stephanie come into the table.
Please. Great, thanks for having me here, guys, I appreciate it. So first, your second point, the grid modernization. They, I am going to touch upon it when I talk later, the slides that talk about ISO New England grid and everything. Just to set the stage, because a lot of the restrictions we've seen in CAPS have to do with how ISO New England manages the program and how Eversource is involved. I just spoke with Phil Burke, the representative from Eversource, they are launching a new plan for grid modernization. He will be giving presentations throughout the state soon, probably within a month. And it does touch upon how we move forward with the strategic planning. It's what you were saying, the items I'm going to cover later definitely impact this page right now, nevermind. Offshore wind, I didn't bring it up in the presentation, but I will show a slide that shows restrictions to getting any sources of energy to New England in particular. There were a lot of restrictions because of pipelines, hydroelectric from Canada, so that, setting the stage with you guys later, will impact additional renewable energies, but it's really important to touch upon how renewable energies as a source, including gas, coal, well, we don't really use coal anymore, oil, and hydroelectric, impact what we do in the future. So it'll be more illuminated later on, I think.
Maybe we should leave the energy portion of this for, pick it up after we have a bit more deeper discussion, and we just maybe talk about water conservation in this part? Does that make sense?
After her presence, that's kind of why I wanted to weave them together, but we can wait on the solar until we have her...
That would work, that solar generation, we have enough 10%.
Yeah, we have to do everything. So let's talk about water and sustainability, and we'll await...
Can I have one more thing?
Yes, please.
Like Heather was saying, a lot of the departments already have plans, so regarding energy, the planning department has local comprehensive plan, and there is an energy section in it. And then the energy committee is working on the climate action plan. You guys, I think, have already approved the 2005 climate action plan, but it's being updated, and so we're working on that right now, and there are a lot of edits to it. And we are a green community, so we have the stretch code, and we have to meet a 20% drop. So there's some KPIs that already exist in plans that influence your strategic plan.
Stephanie, that's a great point. If you could bring those to Peter and I, we'll incorporate those in the draft, and we're going to bring to the select board, those KPIs with regards to those areas.
Just for people at home, that's key performance indicator?
Yes, I'm sorry, key performance, similar to what we're doing in the housing, with the housing production plan, if you bring those to Peter and I, we'll get those wrapped up into the drafts.
Sure, okay. So you would have great input into that part of our strategic plan. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I guess I would just still harken back to the same thing I was saying, I wonder how you would feel about adding a goal in here that, something along the lines of proactively engage with Eversource and key stakeholders around grid modernization and supporting the broader development of renewable energy around New England. So that's the plan that you said that Eversource is developing, and just making sure that we're really proactively engaged to figure out what we can and need to be doing to be part of that.
I would suggest that we need to identify a goal of water use reduction. At some point, we're going to want to show the state that we've already taken action steps to reduce water consumption, to make up for our outfall idea? Because, you know, we're, right now, the USGS is looking at kicking all that water out of the table and dumping it into the ocean, based on our current use. So if we can say that we're going to give everybody a low-flush toilet, if we can still keep that idea out there, and other ways to reduce consumption, I don't know what those all would be, but maybe the water superintendent would have some more. So we had a recent update on water conservation measures, so he's already starting to think in these terms. We need to set a goal of some, figure out what is a reasonable goal, and then try to figure out some ways to incentivize this reduction. At least, what I'd love to do is come back with, and rather than say, consider, develop a water conservation consumption reduction program or initiative to reduce municipal water consumption by, I don't want to have thrown a percentage, but have a really strictly defined percentage as a goal. And then that way we can measure our progress towards that.
I think, big picture though, what I hear you saying in broader terms is that this strategic plan has to go up, down, down, up. Because what you're saying is the people who do this every day should have some input into what this looks like.
Well, they're going to tell us if it can be done.
Exactly.
And how it can be done.
And I think that's a really important point. It's like Stephanie having a lot of input into the energy piece, why wouldn't we do it that way? It's got to go, you know, it's going to go both ways, because they're the experts. We aren't necessarily the experts.
No, we just have to get the policy.
We stay up here, we set the policy, but we need more, it just speaks to your point, that we need more input in writing this plan from the people who do it every day.
Right, and to continue to conceptualize a way to incentivize, because people aren't going to do, people aren't going to buy into it remotely unless there's something in it for them, beyond water consumption or lack thereof. So I think that some kind of language should say, continue to develop language to incentivize, you know, outside sources.
To meet this goal of water...
Right, to back it up.
Right.
And I hate to even say it, but, you know, maybe water is too cheap, because people waste, you know, waste water, and they don't worry about it.
Didn't we try and deal with that?
We just did, didn't we, right?
Yeah, I know, but it's an ongoing challenge.
It is something to think about.
You know, maybe we just put it out there and say, you know, we all have to do this together, and if you have an old toilet, you've got to change it, if you need a tax credit or something for it, we can help you, but I think just, people are complacent about water use. They have a lot of faucet, renovations and development.
When you brush your teeth, you just turn it on and let it keep going. How often do you see that? That drives them crazy.
Right.
So I like, I like that concept, though, and I'm not sure we've done strategic planning that way, by reaching back as well as us coming up with policy. We've got to reach back to the people that do it. So I think they should have input into what...
And these quarterly updates that we're proposing with this dashboard scorecard are going to do exactly that. Every three months, department heads that will be asked to kind of present their information, and then it's an opportunity to interact with select...
That's great. But they could also help you, you know, if you need something specific on energy or solar, you would have input into what that language might look like. So I just think that's a great way to do it. What else on water? Go ahead.
Well, so this is more semantic than anything else, but we've got this section two that's energy and water conservation and sustainability, but where explore water strategy, conservation strategies is mentioned, it says already addressed in priority seven, which is water, wastewater and solid waste management. And so I wonder if we would be better served, and Stephanie just mentioned the climate action plan, I wonder if just shifting the naming and the focus of section two to be really focused on energy conservation, sustainability, and moving all of water to the water goal at number seven would be helpful. Also in terms of alignment with like a dashboard and staffing, and who's involved?
Makes a lot of sense, it does, yeah. So I think, you know, early on when this is developed, I think, you know, having this further conversation, that does make a lot of sense, moving transition to water conservation is out of two, moving it up under seven.
I agree with that, and then we could stay focused on the energy part separately.
I guess I halfway agree. I see wastewater and its role as really different. And I do see it as part of solid waste management, but I could go along with that, I'm just not sure I totally agree with that, the alignment. What else on number two?
Is there any kind of timeline for getting that first one back on? I know I've mentioned it here, but...
So I don't have a timeline right now to share with the board, but I can certainly come back later and let you know, and take a note, and I have it, I'll have to get a stamp and find out, I don't have a...
Because I know in summer, we're like at the edge of being able to produce enough capacity to serve everybody, but like road race weekend and so forth. I think we've got $8.2 million that was awarded from the military to do that work, so it's going to be carbon filtration, then we're going to add a system, I'm not sure if we're adding that project.
It was not part of the AFC.
No.
It's also a separate...
Yeah.
It was off separate mitigation, it was...
It was our legislative delegation that fought for that, and Phil Delacan, I think, was a member, and he got that money appropriated. But I don't know where the money is, or if we've actually received it, or how it's going to work.
Great question, we'll try to have a great answer, because, you know, we'll pour it back into the board.
All right, can we move on to number three?
I see COVID reference already, and I've posted it to the...
Can I bump back for one second? Under number two, where are we with hiring a sustainability coordinator?
You mean that coastal?
Don't coastal.
He dropped you out of the job, dude.
I'm sorry, I think about coastal resiliency.
I could have said more.
I think we have that...
Well, that's under, that's under five.
Yes, but we have to take, we have to take out higher sustainability, but it sort of sent my mind over to the next...
I do an update on that situation, but yeah, we'll show that, we'll show that.
That's fine. Okay, financial?
Appropriation discussion.
It is, yeah.
Exactly. Financial and economic stability.
You know, to Nancy's point previously, I mean, yes, I think we should take out specific reference to COVID, but acknowledge that there is continuing concerns about, you know, inflation, you know, higher costs and everything else. So while it may not be specifically referred to with respect to COVID, but I think we want to keep those ideas in here, because we are still responding to...
Volatility.
The challenges that came from COVID.
Yes, I'd like to delete it all, so I don't have to think about it, but you're absolutely right, that, yeah, it's still, we're still reeling from some of the effects.
You know what one big effect is? It's a high volume of people that are staying here most of the year now, because they came to get away from the city, and now they've adapted and adjusted, and they're working from home more. And even though our year-round resident number hasn't technically increased, the people that used to go back to the city have gone back as much as...
That's true.
You can tell by the traffic, just the volume of people now, the restaurants, I mean, it's good in a lot of ways, but it stresses our resources.
Just in the morning, going to work over the bridge, I go over the bridge every single morning, traffic, even in the summer, going off Cape in the mornings has decreased by a ton.
Yeah.
In the mornings.
But they're coming on.
They're coming all, absolutely.
Yes, and it used to be Labor Day and Falmouth shuts down, and that is just not true anymore.
Right.
At all.
So that is part of our, you know, our need for fire services, police services, all those kinds of things that go with that volume of human...
It affects our roads, our infrastructure, and more traffic means more upkeep, more maintenance.
And we do have a public safety, obviously, key focus area too, so we can talk about that, as we use that area of the plan. I have one suggestion from staff, I want to share with the board, and hear feedback on it, with regards to financial stability. And this could go under, some of these can go under multiple categories. The ask of the finance director at, and the HR director are working on the new integrated financial software system, which has an HR module, is to include something within this, again, financial and economic stability, talking about how the implementation of an integrated financial management system will benefit the organization. And we can measure that, because there's modules that we're going to be rolling out over the next 18 months, that are going to do a long, go a long ways towards improving our financial stability. So we, and again, it could either be added under three, financial and economic stability, or organizational effectiveness, touches on both areas.
I guess I, go ahead. To that point, whether it goes there or organizational effectiveness, I would say in general, a goal around exploring and pursuing not only the integrated financial management, but other modernization of systems to increase efficiency of town operations. In terms of this number three section, I will say, every time I encounter it, I find it a little confusing, because the goals are a mix of town, town financial stability as an entity, and then the broader community of Falmouth's financial stability, and would love to just see that clarified and broken out a little bit in here, if we're going to have goals for both of those, which I think is completely reasonable, right? But just to break those out, where are we talking about the financial stability of the capital town of Falmouth, and where are we talking about the financial and economic thriving of our community?
I think that's a great point, it all works... I think that's a great point, and I'll work with the staff to kind of, you know, bring this back in October for adoption to, to again, break those out, differentiate between the organizational and then the broader community.
The one thing that came up, this may have been two strategic planning meetings or three, was about the school department's budget. And I've been asked about that a couple of times and asked about, I, I know that we, we basically don't get involved in the school department's budget, it's the school committee, but it has come up to me several times about what that looks like. And, you know, can we actually look at more closely at the school department budget? So I add that in as just a consideration. I know we can go get the school department's budget, you can go over to Sherry and get a copy, but I, you know, it's come up to me a couple of times in terms of looking at the school department budget.
But even if we look at it and find stuff that is concerning to us, we don't really have any way to tell them.
You can't, you can't do line items, but you can do the overall number, you can look at the overall number.
And there are other towns in, in, in the Commonwealth that are experiencing some troubles with school department and the municipality not knowing anything about that, you know, that's getting tied together now.
Well, we're really the exception where we always just blindly support the school department because we're lucky enough to be able to afford it.
That's exactly the point, though, we, we still need to be aware.
Most towns, it's like.
You're right, Brockton in, in, in particular.
You said it, not me.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, it's certainly not, not a secret. But I think the, the issue is that if there, if there are issues, we may need to prepare for them or at least start thinking about them because we may be called upon to, you know, to deal with the problems. Not that we can, you know, oversee it, but at least we're aware if they're having some issues.
We can have a dialogue with them.
And I don't think that we need to look line item by line. I don't think that's our purview, but the big picture is because they are a town department. And I just bring that up because it's been brought to me. You know, I, I mean, I'm very supportive of the schools, but I feel like because it has been brought to me, I wanna bring it to you and let the board decide. And I do know that, or at least I did know, that we have a very close relationship with their CFO and our CFO. So any meetings that happened, they were having conversations and I don't think there were ever any surprises. But I just, again, I bring it up because it's been brought to me.
But I, I think it's critical that, that we not phrase it in such a way that we have any questions
Right.
with, with, with what's going on, but more the broader sense of, you know,
We have to keep our head from being stuck in the sand.
our responsibility and stuff with, as opposed to giving, letting people think, you know, that we're worried about
Right, exactly. It's just big picture.
Just a matter of framing it.
Seek ways to further enhance the, the collaboration between the, the town financial departments and the school.
I think, I think their relationship is really good and very collaborative. I think the piece that may not be happening is that the information coming to us.
Okay, okay, so that's, so that's, that was on me to make sure that that.
No, no, it's, it's just big picture stuff.
So I can tell you there's a lot of collaboration between the finance office and the boards and Lori Tour. And since, since I've been here, before I got here, but I, I think we've even refined that. You know, we include the, the, you know, the school finance focuses on revenue forecasting, you know, while we're looking at what they are seeing, cherry sheets and all of that other important information that's coming down. So we're all sharing information. What I need to do a better job is getting that, that process during the budget season in front of you so that you're all aware that that's happening, because it's happening, you just may not be aware.
It definitely is happening, go ahead.
It, it's very important to Bob's point that the messaging that we're putting out to the community who are seeing all these ancillary issues take place in other communities, that we are on top of what we can be on top of. That's, if, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep, that's all I said.
Go ahead.
Totally off the cuff idea that, not sure if it's even legally feasible, but, but wondering, there's, there's a lot of collaboration at the staff level, what we're talking about is, is to some degree board and strategic alignment. Is it possible to do like an annual joint meeting with the school committee to talk about high level priorities and?
Budgetary planning?
Whether it's budgetary or just, yeah, kind of strategic planning and, and information sharing and maybe even more broadly with other elected boards to ensure we really have that policy alignment? If we're talking about policy that impacts planning board or something like that, to have kind of a joint, joint session or something.
I see a follow up on that. But I see a little problem with that too, if I may, that it looks like an oversight. You know, unless it's, unless it's described and laid out correctly, we don't want it to appear to be an oversight meeting that we're checking, you, you know what I'm saying?
I, I would like to see it as the superintendent and the head of the CFO giving a presentation to our board.
Do, do they, no, like other committees, I, I don't remember seeing.
But I, I.
Is that the report?
When, a town meeting?
No, she's come before us, and we've asked questions.
But not, she's never, I don't remember.
With specific issues, yeah, I mean, with specific issues like the roof or, or something like that. I don't think an overall report with the, as we get from affordable housing and, you know, and some of the other committees, that's.
She thinks it was a town meeting, I mean, that's presented in town.
Right, but I, I'm, I'm thinking more of, you know, when we ask Chief Smith to come in and talk about staffing.
Right.
Or we ask the chief of police to come in and give us an update. I think that's what, I don't know, I don't know. But it's more of a high level, but it also could be tailored around the, the finances. So I, I would prefer that it not be a whole board, but it would be the superintendent and the CFO. Just to give us an overall, we're in good shape, these are our special ed issues, here's chapter seventy, there are a lot, there's lots of information that should be.
Frame it in the, how, how can we help? What's coming in the pipeline, you know, how many, well, we got the big building report coming soon, so we'll know more about that. But just, you know, if they see stuff coming, that they can alert us to changes like the special needs, there's a lot more of that now, I don't know if it's that there's more of it or if we just are better at identifying it. That adds a lot of cost because it's more specialized teaching.
Yeah, special education is a whole nother, you know, a whole nother world. I know, we need to be going, we are way behind. All right, let's go.
One last one on the financial stability section, there's the support development of a totally different topic. Improved high-speed internet service, I think we're expecting a consultant's report on possible pathways toward, toward internet, and so maybe just something in there around hearing, acting on, adopting.
Falmouth that.
Pathway, yeah, the Falmouth that.
I, I would, I would keep that to a report out from them. I would not want to put adopt because we don't know what is happening, but we need to know what's happening. Here's my only concern about the whole high fiber piece. From my perspective only, while I agree that in theory we need it, we need to, we need to know what's out there, we need to have some choices, it doesn't go to the top of my list in terms of our financial needs.
I agree too.
I just, I wanna be really careful about that.
Well, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be one or the other, and I think it's gonna have to be the other because the entities that are coming forward that are proposing to do it, they wanna pay for this. Pay for it themselves, so they own it, so it's their product. They don't want halfway, maybe ten million. I was always imagining that the town would have some kind of a stake in it to be a partner, but they're not really interested in that. It's either all or nothing, they wanna do it themselves and don't wanna splat in. They don't wanna be encumbered by the slow process of town meeting funding and so forth, and the uncertainty. So I think it's more likely that it's gonna be a private entity model. The one that backed out, it was because their internal organization just kind of broke apart. But the people who broke off from that company are the ones who are trying to regain and get the financing. So I think it could still happen, so they.
I think it should be a, a. I think it's a high priority, though.
I agree.
Until somebody gets something.
And we don't.
Together that's presentable and doable.
Yeah, the only way it would become a priority is if all those entities went away and we still wanted to do it, then we would have to fund it ourselves, and I don't think the town, the administration would support that.
There's too many options.
I agree, but the other thing is, my understanding is, yes, they'll fund it everything and they'll do everything for the first five years.
And then we don't know what we have.
Right.
Right, then they want us to take it over, so.
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard that at all.
I have, that they want, yes. The first five years, they pay everything.
Then they cash out and, and, and we're left with the, with the problem.
Right, and then they.
The bag, Bob, we're left with the bag.
What their revenue, they try to offset it by, this is what we, revenue has come in. But it's a, it's so, and I'm no financial wizard, trust me, but the things that I've heard, I'm thinking until I see it in writing, it's really hard to.
All right, I guess I was just gonna, no, I was just gonna say, I think what I was thinking in terms of the goal is that we're expecting this report on the different options, and it seems like it would be really helpful for this board to actually align on a direction.
Yes.
Right, so we need to receive that report, I'm not saying just adopt that report, but as a goal is to align on a direction forward for this, because it's been, it's been this debate for multiple years now, right? Different groups going.
But it's so convoluted that nobody's, even on this board, not everybody has the same information.
That's true.
And the rise in apparently is, is looking to expand FiOS and expenses. People are watching.
And then, everything goes away, right? So there's that other third prong, you're absolutely correct.
What's going on over the last four or five years is developing other big time companies' approach to how they can service us, I think is what's happening.
I'll tell you one thing, though, Falmouth's interest in it has spurred a lot of interest by the company.
Yes.
Well, it's a wonderful community for them.
Yeah.
Is there anything else on financial stability, or can I move on, only because we're already at our sixty minute mark? Anything else? And, and don't forget, this isn't your final say, you can send comments to Mike and to me that we can then incorporate and bring back to the board. Let's move to health and safety.
I don't see, man, I don't see anything about a new police station in this. I, I see acquire funding for a new replacement fire station, but I don't see anything about a study or a prospective acquisition for land or the development of a new police station in this.
And, and I think we can, we can change some language, because you're absolutely correct. We're waiting for the, the study to come in that will tell us what location. So I think we just need to outline some of the steps in that process more clearly.
And the social worker issue on the next, on the next bullet point, the specific actionable goals, we have, we have funded.
Yeah, it's been accomplished. So those are the. That would be one of those things that comes off and goes on.
Civil service, done.
But can it, can it come out and in your, in your chart as met and then the month and the date?
It will be.
Because I think it's really important to keep track of the goals that we've met as well.
Achieved goals and, and the solution of them.
That was my point of mind, that, that we wanna see where we've met all of these particular goals. Show, show the immense project, progress that, that we've made.
Progress on this.
I hate to burst that bubble, but I mean, we've made progress getting up to speed where we should have been ten years ago. But we need to look forward.
The way it's described, we've already done one.
We still need to take, the, the police chief, the police department still needs to get credit for meeting that goal. I, I totally agree with you, that, this is, it's just like housing, this is not the end all be all. But it is a goal that we've met, and I wanna make sure that that's something we celebrate. We gotta remember that, but it doesn't mean we stop looking.
Well, we can check off all those boxes for sure, but I'd like to set a new goal, which is, I don't think five patrols in this town is adequate.
Five units?
Yeah, I think we need to have seven, possibly eight, and that should be some kind of a goal that's in here. So to that point, so working with Chief Lori and his deputy chief, coming up now with a goal, and I don't have it in front of me right now, it's gonna be part of the platform, but they're actually looking at the district kind of alignments and adding additional districts with the goal of reducing response time, so it's tied to a very measurable. I don't know what, how many minutes now is the average, but they're looking at average response time to emergency calls, non-emergency calls, so that'll, again, will be the metric that we report on under the broad initiative of, you know, enhancing the effectiveness or continue to enhance public safety services townwide. Well, what does that mean and how to measure it? Well, that, that's what Jeff and his staff are coming up with right now as those measures. And one of that is looking at a staffing model study, having a consultant come in and take a look at it to, to add additional districts, means I used to call them, within the city, or within the town.
I think that makes perfect sense.
So, so that will come back in, as part of the draft that you'll see in October under, under public safety. And we will go ahead and add a section about the ongoing feasibility study and assessment of the new police station.
I'd like to see something in there to extend at least, at least some kind of, some move forward towards a, a, a K nine program for the police department too, since the sheriff's department doesn't make their canines available like they used to. I think it would be an attribute to our police department to at least discuss. He may be looking into it already.
That's already on the table.
But with single manned units, a K nine that's available on shift is a force multiplier for everything. Search and rescue, drug detection, officer safety and community outreach. I think it's very important and it's an important deterrent for people that would, would choose to do others harm or, or circumvent, you know, society's law, to see that we had a K nine unit or had a couple of K nine units on shift. I, I've been an advocate for that for a long time, and when I ride with the guys, that's what they say, God, we wish we had one of these because it helps them in, in so many different ways. So I'd like to see some kind of language, that would be one of my goals, or at least a request.
And I'd like to see a language about recognizing the fact that we're, even though we're fully staffed for what we've budgeted, we're still, I, in my opinion, we should look at being higher, staffed at a higher level for this volume of residents. Because like I said earlier, it's not thirty-three thousand persons in town anymore, it's more like fifty.
It's a lot of ground to cover.
And I would ask that, that, I, I totally agree with you, and I ask, I would ask that the police chief take that goal of yours and make it into specific language, because he must have.
And again, that's, it's already in draft, I just don't have his part in the packets this morning, so I can't submit directly to it. But is it in the draft, and I'll bring it up back in October.
Okay, did you have something before I go to Bob?
Just to say, yeah, I don't think we need to be setting the staffing plan, but if the goal is to ensure that we're adequately staffed for fifty K and growing, that's the goal we set, and then Chief Lori can figure out what that requires.
And he puts the specifics.
Right, and whether the K P I is response time or whatever it is.
We set very specifically, thank you.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
But a K nine implement to this would be increased funding too, so.
Can we, is there anything else that you want to look at in terms of health and public safety?
Are, are we still thinking about an ambulance day at Weston Town?
Since it hit. Yeah, what happened with that? Yeah, so we're actually, we, we're having, we have funds available to do that engineering study. And, you know, as you all know, we're responding to an issue with diversity of stairs. We got Station Four recently. And part of those discussions, I was working with Peter McCarren, the D P W director, and facilities maintenance, just to get in our.
Harmony fix on the stairs and.
We're gonna fix that health, that safety issue, and then we have the remaining funds, and I think it's roughly forty thousand dollars of the town meeting appropriation, was to go towards an engineering structural study of, of Station Four to look at the viability of adding a bay.
That you covered that, huh, Doug? Forty grand for, for.
It's gonna be very specifically scoped, so that we have the structural engineer look at just one element, right? Adding an additional bay to that side of the building, right? We can't go to the backside because of the septic, it's literally limited to that side of the building.
I say that to Doug because Doug reads plans too for a living.
Right, I know. The only other thing that I would ask that we continue to sort of keep at the forefront, and I know with Narcan, maybe we don't hear about all of the, the overdoses, but we still continue to struggle with an opioid problem. And so I wanna make sure that we, I, I get we're looking at all these other pieces, but I don't wanna not continue to consider that.
That also piggybacks off what Doug said about increasing staff and more coverage.
And they've already determined that having social workers, Paul, it's a great idea. It really takes a, a patrol car off duty. So right now they're using overtime to staff four hour shifts and stagger them so that those social worker people are always available, because there's a high need for it.
Yes, and they can move from your car to your car to your car, they're not with one, one person.
Well, actually, they're, they're dedicating a car.
Just for those calls now.
Yep, so you've got your five patrol cars that are still working. Now you've got number six who's on voluntary overtime to come in and cart the social workers around to different scenes. Because they were finding that if they're just riding along with one officer, and then they get called to a scene, then the person is just sitting there where there's a need down the road. So that's another part.
You don't need them on the car.
Been working on how much staffing it really needs to be effective with that, a little bit too.
You and I have been out with the homeless and the drug addicted in the woods before, when nobody, I mean, before this happened. So there's been a, I haven't gotten any of these calls lately since these, these clinicians have been on, have you?
I have not, I, I would, I'd love to see, see some statistics around their work, but. I, I would, I'd love to see some statistics around their work, but that's off.
I've got that note to bring back to the person.
That's, would be really, it has. And it also, it also changes the way we are responding to mental health and drug addiction crises in this town.
Yeah, instead of looking away.
Or instead of being a police officer, you know, sometimes you need the police officer, but you need a different skillset.
But de-escalate, de-escalate.
Having a mental, exactly.
I think it takes a lot off the plate for the officers too. They can focus on their work more than, you know, getting stressed out about trying to fix these same things over and over, because they're not, that's not really their job.
My first year here, my first year here, there was a call that, I, I called her as the chair, there was a woman living out in the woods, 60-something, 70 years old, porn rate, and I called her, I go, what do we do? She comes there, she makes a few calls, but there were four police officers, didn't know what to do with it.
Right.
There was no beds, there was no, no, they were all looking at each other, it was not their fault, they didn't know what to do.
Right.
That's when it really hit home for me.
In terms of sectioning and some other things that social workers can do that officers can't.
Okay, we got to get moving. In terms of your point about SMART goals, and I totally agree with you, in terms of keeping focus on, on issues, especially given the evolving situation, the increasing problem of fentanyl, in a whole range of things, is, is that an initiative level priority to, to think about? I don't, I don't know. I, I always worry when a goal is, continue collaborating, that that just feels very amorphous and easy to let it drop. Is there in your mind more of a, an initiative there, probably across, not only with police department, but across departments?
Human services and others to. But I think we do have it. I, I think I did, the only reason I point that out is, and I, I agree with you, I, I was just staying at the 30,000-foot view, because I know for a fact that we have human services and we have the police department, we have the fire department, and we have the housing team, and we have a group that meets every month. I just don't want it to slip away. I know they're already doing the work.
We've just got to continue to find it.
And I think, is a suggestion, you know, is so I, what I'm hearing is that they're some kind of reporting outlet, or I heard the worst statistics, you know, so implement a, an opioid initiative to report back every quarter, right? And again, it's going to be part of, between human services, the great work that Sisie Howman does, and the social workers, there's a lot of data that we can present. And keeping it general, you know, versus.
But keep, but I think what I hear you saying is, is this needs to be more specific, like creating a reporting structure that, so that we're kept informed of what they really are doing. And I would also include the schools in that, given the number of social workers that they hired in the past four years.
Well, let me take a shot at that.
Okay, that's fine.
Include it under, under that, that broad category of health.
Yes, yes.
Nail down, because you've got the heat support group too, they're doing a lot of outreach, and there's other entities like that that are not necessarily part of our.
Right, but we, at least we can wrap our arms around our town departments that are doing a lot, and they, I'm sure they will mention other entities. But let's go on to number five, management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure.
Procedural question here, I guess, we have a couple of agenda items this afternoon to discuss, the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee report and the Surf Drive report, which, as with number one with housing, I think what we should be doing is making sure that those reports are reflected in our strategic plan, and so, I don't know if you want to, how much you want to.
It's backwards.
Right, and, and it's kind of like with the, the solar energy, I don't know how much you want to talk about now versus how much you want to just kind of defer some of this to, to those discussions this afternoon.
I agree.
I agree also.
I'm totally.
And I was even going to suggest that, you know, what we talk about here now is premature, because we're going to be hiring a person.
Yes.
Come in here and break this down, and really give us a new fresh perspective on it, so.
This whole online may change.
Yeah, and it's going to fall on this person to sort of create and guide us in this section.
The one thing I will say is, because primary guarantee for us is that this is going to have to be a staff-driven initiative, not a volunteer-based type of initiative. And I don't think bringing back a committee to work on it is the answer, I think it has to be as predicted, I mean, as proposed, that it be integrated into the DPW and work closely with the DPW director, I saw they put it under review of the DPW director, I think that makes sense. Maybe you should be writing that building with the DPW.
I agree.
Certainly getting the input of the new hire to see what would serve them as well, to help them with their job, right?
So you want to come back and revisit like, is that the section of the agenda?
We can do that, but I think what I hear Heather saying is, maybe in some ways we should defer it.
I, I mean, I think there, I guess I would, and Mike jump in here as well, I feel like there should be a back and forth, right? That, that it doesn't necessarily serve our new coastal resiliency specialist to come in with no guidance or direction, right? So having some priorities and directions to guide their work and then, and I think through the coastal resiliency, actually, these other two reports that we have start to provide those, there's some high-level policy and direction setting that we need to do to guide their actions and, and next steps. And in terms of a committee, and I'll say Stephanie, since you're still here, maybe you can chime in, like that, what is, I could see there being a role for a standing committee to support a coastal resiliency specialist in the way that Stephanie's working with the energy committee, so if that's it. And I don't know if that's, I guess I'm, I'm very open to hearing from staff that that's not a productive way to work, but we've got an affordable housing committee that works with our affordable housing, with our housing coordinator, we've got an energy committee who's kind of supporting it, and especially in these roles where they don't have a larger staff of their own, you know, I wonder if there would be a role for a standing committee to support the coastal resiliency specialist as well.
I just feel like you have to be careful with it, because we can't afford more years of inactivity. And when we put that last committee together, the idea was action, work with the DPW, identify specific projects that can be actionable, because we already had two big reports sitting on the shelf, which identified all the actions that were required, but they didn't quite get the message of action, and they gave us another report, which I think was, and I tried to talk them out of it through the whole first year, and I finally threw my hands up, and I thought these people are just going to do what they want to do, we wasted a whole year not doing the vulnerability assessment, because they wanted to think about finding another contractor instead of using the Woods Hole Group, who was a very rate they're ready to go.
So, so we will have that to the spirit now with the coastal resiliency specialist position that we're recruiting now for. So I, I would support and get up from the discussion, you know, bringing back, because I, I think it would benefit that person, that position, to have a, a group that they meet with. But I agree with Doug, I think that, you know, just having the committee and not having any, any actionable goals and, and follow through.
There was a lot to ask.
But now we've got the Canadian spear coming out more, right with the new position, this is our group, so.
And let's, my suggestion would be, let's get this person on board. I like Heather's idea of giving them an umbrella under which to work and let them decide or, or suggest to us, I'd really like a committee or, no, my first year, I, I need to just focus on these three things and getting them done.
The stage is certainly set, I mean, there's all kinds of information and everything ready to go.
But then get their feet under them for, for a short time, and then, then develop what they need, because you've got a new person probably coming from, from somewhere else, and you've got all the people that have already been here with their own set of ideas that, without sounding crass, couldn't, couldn't respond over a year other than a report. I think it would be important for whatever this hire is to establish their program, coordinate with town departments, and then see what that need is, and then develop from there.
And take that core.
And then work off of that.
Side note, all right, I'm going to.
Stephanie's waiting to.
Oh, go ahead. I just wanted to add, when I came in, I had, I was working with the energy committee, and I was just very clear and concise about my role and my tasks with them, and how they could work with me and support me. In factions that I wasn't responsible for, they could take the lead with that. So it really depends on who you hire.
Yes.
And their ability to communicate very clearly with the committee to make sure we're not overlapping and we're not redundant and wasting time.
And defend their own positions.
Good idea.
And we probably.
I'll just weigh in that I think, I think getting the committee to work with the coordinator, as Stephanie said, with clear direction would, would ultimately help that person and his or her job going, going forward. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of just striking it completely, but making it a clear understanding of the hire, you know, that, that that's there, but their goal is, or their job is specifically related to certain.
They help with research quite a bit. So if there are questions that stem from you or Mike, I, I have a team, educated people who have time, who can do research and help assist. It's, it's a pretty powerful and helpful town. All right, anything else that we need to talk about under management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure? All right, let's move on. Organizational effectiveness and community engagement.
I'm sure if I can kick it off, I mentioned this earlier, the diversity, equity, inclusion and logging session, I do have some significant language from the HR director, Susan Pompin, if I could read that.
What?
And again, I apologize if you don't have copies of this, but Susan is recommending that we include under organizational effectiveness and community engagement, practice diversity, equity and inclusion in decision-making and community engagement is, is, is an initiative. And the specific actionable goals that we're going to be able to report out on, conduct a DEIB readiness survey for all employees to provide the input anonymously, provide DEIB training for the management team, and then for all employees tailored to the results of this readiness survey. And we're working out with consultants, Susan is, Peter, that are going to roll out this survey, a town-wide anonymous survey, to kind of gauge kind of where we're at in knowledge of the importance of DEIB. But again, tying the results of the survey to very specific training that the consultant would do, and ultimately, if we're successful in going forward and hiring that position full-time, that would give kind of that, that position kind of a framework for what's expected. Review town policies, procedures, job descriptions, and updates necessary to make sure that we're in compliance with contemporary DEIB best practices. As you probably know, a lot of our job descriptions and whatnot are not representative of best practices within the DEIB sector, so that's important. HR director, continue to participate in the Health and Community DEI Coalition, which is very important. Continue to support International Person Disabilities Day, these are very specific actions, right, within that broader policy goal or initiative of practice of diversity, equity, inclusion and decision-making. So I, I, well, again, we'll come back to those red line inclusions for the, for the incident. Updates will be requested in October to the plan, just wanted to mention those specific items that the HR directors write there.
Questions, comments on this section?
Just one, Mike, when we get that, will, will that be in Word format so that we can make?
It will be, it will be, we'll show the red lines.
And then, and then we, not that I know how to do that.
Good. It gets so confusing. I've done it.
Blue, they're underlined, they're not underlined.
I'm trying to keep that as uncomplicated as possible, but yeah, it'll be a Word document and certainly a red line, you'll be able to see the new inserted text, and essentially we're recommending it be scrubbed.
Anything else under this category? All right, we're going to go to waste water, waste, waste wa-water, waste water and solid management. And I guess, you know, thinking about what you said, Heather, maybe it really does make sense to pull out water.
Out of here?
And put it, yeah, I think.
I thought you were, she was saying, put it all in here.
It's currently kind of in two places. One, the first one refers to here, and then it's, and then the top one here is to evaluate townwide strategies, but water conservation is here.
Full water, I'll put it back here, on energy, I got it, I think that makes sense.
I do too. I'm going to look like that changed, maybe water conservation out of, to energy and water conservation and sustainability, we've got to make the water conservation up under water, which waters up, which two will be energy.
Yeah, I think that does make sense. I had to think about it, okay.
I do have a suggestion. Just two weeks ago, I met with Alan Robinson and Scott Peterson, Peter McConner, and I did, we talked about the need for a, to implement, well, create and then implement a solid waste management plan, which the town does not currently have, other towns are capable of it. So I think it's important we do that. Alan's given me some copies of some example solid waste management plans, so I think that would be an important kind of initiative within this.
I continue to meet with them about that, get their input, that was previous to them meeting with you, but yeah, they're, they're determined and they're dialed in on it.
And I just met last week, Thursday, with the Military Civilian Community Council, you all pointed me to sit on that, we had a presentation, we have a lady's name from, from the county, that are looking, Marshall County is looking at a kind of a regional composting facility on perhaps, it's just kind of in the exploration stages, perhaps placing that on, on Cape Cod, but again, very early, very preliminary.
Have you mentioned that before?
Yes.
Okay, I was, I remember Doug being a proponent of.
I had, I would like to have, consider putting up the transfer station, because we've got 18 acres out there, but apparently the military is thinking about divesting more land, so if they got a new spark for it, that's fine with me.
I would love to see a goal here along those lines be to proactively pursue opportunities to, to reap the benefits of regionalization. Water, waste, water, solid waste management are all areas where, whether it's base redevelopment or working with the Cape Cod Commission, these are really regional issues that we shouldn't be trying to solve just within our town borders.
I was going to say the same thing, and, and, you know, there may be even other areas within our strategic plan that, you know, acknowledgement of the possibility of regional cooperation might be something to, you know, to look at, even, you know, even housing and, and some of the other things, just to, you know, keep as a general goal to consider where appropriate, you know, adopting regionalization or regional plans and collaboration.
Did you want to say something? Stephanie?
I wanted to add, there's a solid waste action plan within the climate action plan. So I'll make sure I work with you on that. So there's a whole section already in there?
Which I did not know, I'm going to be honest, I did not know. We have a lot of different great plans that have been created, and I did not know that they had an element in that one.
Anything else on this one? Go ahead. This is a potentially a bit of a policy change to discuss, but the encouragement of private wells for irrigation purposes, I mean, if we're thinking about water usage and the health of our aquifer overall, private wells or public water supply doesn't really matter, it's all the same aquifer, and so I'd like to see us pursuing goals for water conservation and aquifer health across the board, not just thinking about, you know, I know this, this particular goal was written to mitigate water pressure concerns, but if we're talking about a water conservation strategy, I'd like to see that be across the board and not.
It's also, I also put it in there because like in the case of Maravista, you're pulling that nitrate water out of the ground, so it's helpful in that way too, because you're taking it out, but you're putting it right back on the plants and things, so it's not really going, I mean, some of it will evaporate and some will be used by the plants, but you're not really losing it.
You're on a wastewater treatment plant.
Right, it's going back into the irrigation and it's removing the nitrogen from the groundwater, so that's why I, I was advocating for that. But I agree with you, overall, the state monitors all of our use.
Right.
We still have farms.
They don't separate them out.
Right.
They don't separate them out.
Well, I mean, do you think it needs to come out? It's kind of a short-term goal, but it also, it is a concern for us, because we do get up against that peak ability to produce potable water.
This year hasn't been as bad, because we've got so much rain, but last year we were drought conditions quite a bit.
Yeah, for the last several years, it's been more often than not.
This year hasn't been as bad.
But to Heather's point, I have to say, I was on a run the other day, and I saw a bunch of sprinkler systems going off, and it was real early in the morning, and I'm thinking, this just doesn't compute, because we are so worried about water, but man, they have a great lawn.
And a lot of them are on timers, and people don't even think, you, you, I mean, it could have rained the night before, and, and the sprinklers come on on a timer.
Well, they're supposed to have a rain sensor.
So I do, I do see, I do see your point, and I, I see yours, Doug, I, so we have to think about how we want to, do we want to take it out, because where do we want to leave it?
I think it's a good reminder for people that if they're going to have irrigation, it should be on a well. I don't think any irrigation should be hooked to potable water.
I agree. I agree.
So I mean, in that sense, at least it's better than using potable water.
If it's that important to you, you'll drive an irrigation line.
I guess, maybe where I'm coming, when we touched on this a little bit earlier, it was around setting a general, like, we need to have a goal to develop a water conservation strategy. And maybe rather than figuring out what the water conservation strategy is now, that becomes an initiative to have a, to develop a broader strategy or set of strategies and policies that we can discuss later.
Policy, you've got to be able to enforce it. And there's a lot of people watering their lawns in this town. You know what I mean? And then that comes with a whole, another set of things you have to deal with. Who enforces it? What are the penalties? So that's part of that, what you're suggesting, right? It would have to be.
Well, but I mean, and even beyond that, like, what's the goal of the strategy? What are we trying to get to in terms of water usage or like?
Well, I guess the only way to really get rid of this would be to say, stop having lawns. And let's just have natural.
Cape Cod.
But you can't really.
Have a Cape Cod.
When I was a kid, we didn't mow lawns. We just had pine needles and just, you know.
Mine is sand and crabgrass.
Hey, good luck with that.
Yeah, I know.
Good luck with that.
People are not going to go for it.
I agree, but I also think that our top priority is water conservation. And so what messages are we sending? What is it, what is our goal? And our goal maybe should be to make sure that we are conserving water as diligently as we can, regardless if it's on a well or town water. So I think it's, I think we can discuss it further, but I do agree with you that, you know, we're saying, let's conserve water, but oh, by the way, you can take it out of a well, which it all, it's all the water. So go ahead.
Just one quick thing, overall question. Will you be going through the ongoing, ongoing goals section and taking out those things that we've already done? I mean, what hits me like right there is explore enterprise account for water system, right? That's something we've done, right?
Well, the ongoing, we're still at the enterprise ones.
Right, yeah. I mean, I guess I'm just saying, I mean, will you keep repeating them as ongoing goals even if we, you know, have met them?
With respect to that particular, yes.
And other ones that may crop up as well. It's a little confusing to people who are reading it, that's.
Well, this is a living document. Yes, my goal is part of these updates to remove and place in the completed category, which these have. But some are reoccurring. I mean, and some of them are ongoing. Housing will never stop. There will always be a goal, right?
Right, no, I'm talking about the ones that have been a goal, have been met, you know, and we're moving on.
Well, like the ELICSWs for the Peace Department, we've met it. We have to keep looking, but that one particular goal.
That particular goal.
Has been met, and I think it should be on the met column with a month and a date. Doesn't mean at some point someone's going to say, too, aren't enough.
We need another. I mean, that's my point. I think we probably do need another if we can afford it.
The priorities will change and they'll change positions on the priority list.
And they'll come up and they'll go off and then they might add on again. So are we good with setting this?
One last thing with water is what would be new sources of fresh water? Where would we get it? I mean, is there more potential for additional wells? Is there a need? Because it's stated in here that explore opportunities for additional water capacity. Are we going to maybe someday have a desalination plant? Take water from the ocean and clean it up?
Or just leave it in there? That leaves it open-ended for future.
But I'm just wondering, are we actually doing it? Are we actually doing it? It says we're doing it, but I don't know that we are, other than trying to fix the respond well.
Well, so yes, so under ongoing goals, we're considering that like an initiative exploring new sources. I would suggest maybe going back and having a subset of steps, right? And one of those may be, you know, cost out or analyze the viability of a desalination. I mean, that's an expensive proposition, but looking at that as a very specific element of what would be, you know, finding additional water resources. But at some point, it may be, it may be something that has to be considered, given the condition of the aquifer.
Because again, to those points earlier, and I think everybody acknowledges this now. Well thought out plan with regards to the goals, they weren't very, very, they weren't specific or measurable enough. So that's a good goal. But then I need to come back and working with staff in October to come up with some very measurable,
specific steps, action steps within that.
Because we don't really know what sea level rise is going to do to our water. And seeing the inundation continues, it might push the lens inward. You know, it might not be as much available in Falmouth as it has in the past.
And that's another regionalization possibility as well. That type of desalination.
Or more collaboration with the military base. Because they're sitting on the top of the ocean the last, so they're going to be the last place it runs over.
Folks, we're 30 minutes behind, so I'm going to make a suggestion. The next two bullet points, discuss the establishment of a liquor commission recommended by the Charter Review Committee. That was back in August of 2022. What I would like to suggest, if the board has consensus, I'm not asking you to vote, but I would like to direct the town manager to start to look at this and consider a home rule petition, which is what we would have to file to create our own liquor commission to be considering liquor licenses. If we have consensus around that, then I will, then the board will direct Mr. Manager to do that.
I didn't see a stadium more than five minutes.
Right. We don't need any time.
Just look at all these to that.
This has been knocking around for years. Everybody thinks it's a good idea. I think most people think it's a good idea.
Well, it's not the first time it's come up because I've brought it to people before and I was told, no, only big cities do that. And I'm saying, well, if you look at the number of licenses that we have to look at all the time, it is impacting us. So do I have to, do we have to consent to direct the town manager?
Well, yeah, some initial conversations with town councils. Yep.
So, and that means filing that home rule petition, which is not a big deal, but let's do that. I would say the same thing with the establishment of sign review committee. You all know that we need to have one.
I didn't know. That was how I knew.
Well, it must have been the design review.
It was, it was design review.
Yeah, the design review.
Yep, and so the planning board decided that they wanted to have purview over building design. And they adjusted the mission of the design review to sign only. And then they just kind of, you know, Art Calvi did almost all the work organizing the whole thing. When he passed, it just kind of fell away.
So my question to the board is, can we build consensus around reinstating the sign review committee? That's my only question to you.
Considering what we had to deal with with Aldi and, you know, and their signs and everybody else. And people were complaining that we shouldn't have happened. You know, I think we would be, would be helped, the board would be helped by having somebody look at it more gradually and bring it to us with their recommendation.
With a recommendation.
Rather than us have to spend a half hour at a select board meeting dealing with.
Or multiple meetings.
Or multiple meetings, because we send them back for revisions and then they come back again. So I would be very supportive of that type of process.
Okay, and the other piece is, is one of the things, and Heather, I don't want to call you out, but one of the things that Heather was saying was, we need to spend more time around what we're supposed to be doing and what we're charged with. I'm not quoting you, but you and I talked, it was like, and this is one of the ways I think that we could really do that. And I agree, I think we need to be talking policy and higher level select board stuff. So if we have consensus around that, I would, again, charge the town manager with reinstating that committee.
I agree.
And that's all it is, is a reinstatement, so it's not a big deal. Okay, let's knock those off our list.
And magically, if my math is correct, we are now on time.
This one's over here. You're already a half hour behind.
We're going to really pull into the lead when we get to the walk part.
Easy, exactly. Don't worry, Douglas, I've already gone.
I don't want to have that chance soon either.
Well, that's after lunch.
That's all right. We can spend a lot of time on solar being held up.
And if we, and if we, you know, if we get too wide down, if we want a working lunch, I'd look for consensus around that. But let's keep going. So I'm going to throw this one, number five. I believe Mr. Brown brought this to me. Discuss the creation of a coastal appropriation fund.
I don't think that was me, but I'm happy to talk about it. But I don't, I didn't come up with the idea.
Well, I mean, what I saw in the packet was different than establishing an appropriation fund. I mean, the support is to hire someone and then roll.
So it was going to be my preference to discuss.
Go ahead.
So I don't know who suggested we talk about it, but I think it's a great suggestion. So, but before we get into that, so I wanted to give the board an update, which I already have. The coastal resiliency specialist position is advertised. HR tells me we already have seven or eight strong candidates that have applied for the application. So that, I forget the preferred, the closing date for that, but it's coming up September, September 3rd. I think it's just after Labor Day is the closing date. So I think we're making great progress towards filling that position. And my point was going to be this. I think we, I think we allow that person and hopefully we have, we find somebody who's one of great expertise come in and evaluate, looking at the different plans that have already been developed and then formulate, have discussions with myself, Peter. I am recommending that that position be housed under the Department of Public Works. But a couple of different options, but I think it just, it made sense because of the direct impact and work, the DPW, whether it be roads, road superintendent or some of the other divisions, working with beach departments. So I think that I wanted the board to know that I think the first, next important step is to get that position filled, bring in that expertise, and then have them sit down and kind of evaluate kind of the landscape and then looking at the great work that some of the committees and whatnot have already done. And then this on that work, formulate, and come with perhaps a recommendation. I'll say this, I don't know if it was part of the coastal appropriation fund concept or not. Having within the beach, I think, operational department, a sum of $25,000 for beach nourishment, I think is woefully inadequate. I'm talking to Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager, and working with Maggie and again, with this new coastal resiliency specialist to look at and increasing that in FY '26, our next operational year. It could be considered capital too, but I think it's kind of an operational, ongoing expense. And I don't want to haphazardly throw out a number, but I think it needs to be multiples, two or three minimally, compared to what we're investing now on an annual basis. Now, that being said, you know, $25,000 is buying the, you know, is procuring the materials. Working with our MES, marine and environmental services in the dredging, we do oftentimes come up with a lot of materials through the dredging operation to offset some of those costs, right? So that's a benefit. I just, talking to Peter Johnson Staub, I don't think we can lie going forward on that contribution of sand and dredged materials to use on our beaches. I think we have to enhance and beef up that beach nourishment fund, that account.
I think we're going to have to fight for special legislation to permit offshore mining. We need to identify a place that's our regular place where we get sand from and pump it back. That's what they do in Florida and Carolina and a lot of places. You've got to really do a lot of work to pave the way for it. But ultimately, if we don't do that, we're probably going to.
Or screening program too. You know, we've, we've got pits all over the place here. And we screen, one of our companies screens for a living. You can put out a lot of material with the right equipment in a short period of time if you've got a mass in front of you.
But eventually that'll run out too.
You've got to stop, you've got to stop the bleeding until you come up with that legislation though at some point before it's too late.
That might be a good one too.
You know what I'm saying? They should have a preventive plan.
Just a question, if the coordinator were not under DPW, where else might that position land?
So what, we consider two different options, well, two other options, I should say. I mentioned one, marine and environmental services because of that coordination in the dredging piece. I think the stronger one, we've looked, when Peter and I looked at other similar positions on Cape, we looked at planning and community development because there's a planning aspect behind it as well. I, and I'm not minimizing the force of planning because there's going to be an aspect of this person's job that's going to be about planning going forward. I just want somebody to get stuff done and again, connecting it, placing it up under DPW. The people, the boots on the ground, so to speak, that are actually out in the community after a storm rolls through. You know, looking forward, you know, protecting the infrastructure, working with, you know, water superintendent and Amy Lowell, the wastewater superintendent, protecting those coastal resources, that infrastructure, I think is going to be a huge role of this person's job. So those were the other two, the other two potential areas, planning, community development, and MES.
They're going to learn a lot more from the guys at the DPW shop than they are at the planning division about the actual conditions.
How to fix stuff, because that's what we've been tasked with.
And when there's a storm, they need to be coordinating with the DPW when the beaches get.
But I mean, the history, I mean, like every day, that might be great. They're going to find out, oh, a Rempelwood surf drive washed out and all these stories. Totally, they're going to learn a lot from being with those people.
Working with town engineer and the engineering office, right? Again, in terms of planning that, how to, how to, you know, protect those, the pipes to the ground.
Any other questions on coastal resilient, coastal appropriation fund?
I'm just curious, where are we going to identify a new revenue source? And how much are we going to be putting away for a revenue fund?
So, so right now, with the, and I'm probably oversimplifying it by talking about beach nourishment. I just think that program is underfunded right now. I think we need to increase that. And talking with the Assistant Town Manager, the Finance Director, and again, this is going to be an operational budget item in the spring. But I'm looking to perhaps increase that from $25,000 to $75,000 or $100,000, just as an initial number. I'm going to rely on the coastal resiliency specialist to kind of bring his or her input to that process as well.
Interesting. So it's not actually a separate fund? You're just talking about budget?
Correct, correct, using the existing. And again, and I may have missed the mark on exactly whoever suggested this as far as the coastal appropriation fund. I saw that beach nourishment portion, and I've known this since I got here a year ago, that that was woefully underfunded. And I wanted to kind of enhance that. Like, there's been multiple conversations at shoot length about that we've talked about. Could have been any one of us at one point talking about.
The argument has always been that we've never spent the $25,000.
You're exactly right.
Right.
Which is crazy.
Right.
So, and again, there may be more, and I'm all, I want to learn more about, you know, what other aspects that would come up under this coastal appropriation fund. I just don't, I wanted to make sure that the board is aware that we're very close to, I think, having a successful improvement for that position. And they're going to bring a lot of expertise to the town.
Good, sounds good.
Any other questions or points do you have? Robert? All right, we're going to move on to overview of how many large-scale solar projects do we have on hold because of the moratorium of solar projects in Massachusetts? And I know this was done.
Yes, it was.
So we're out of schedule. All right, here we go. You've got 20 minutes.
Take all the time you need.
20 minutes and Scott's going to watch.
I know where she's going with this. I asked her to turn down her slide presentation.
Well, Mike's really afraid I'm going to go over. And I don't blame you because there were some very dense slides in there. Do you all have a printout of them? And the reason I did that, I am going to address your questions first. But the reason I added dense slides is so you have a reference to them. And they're as smart as you guys are, so smart, but there is no way you can not understand all of this the first time you hear it.
That's for sure.
There is no way.
So let me just throw out, so everyone should have as part of their uploaded packets Stephanie's presentation. It includes some ancillary slides, I think you, or supplemental slides as well. I think the entire pack, the entire presentation is loaded in here.
It is, all right, so there's 10 ancillary slides or more, but we don't even need to address those. Only if questions come up after. So I'm going to try to just move through this really fast. But I did want to address a lot of the questions first in the first few slides, so.
You can be thorough in your, in your, in your delivery of the presentation. We do have, we do have some excerpts on the same.
And.
You asked me to tell.
You know, what are you, I just cut 30 minutes down.
My pleasure, boy. I appreciate Stephanie being here on Saturday. You helped for Saturday morning. And certainly she put a lot of work into this presentation, so be thorough in your.
Okay, yes, and it's important.
It will help with our strategic plan quite a bit. And laying the groundwork now will be really important for our conversations for the next 10 years. So that's why it's really, I was really happy that I could come share some of this stuff with you guys.
I'm glad to hear you're going to be here at least 10 years.
Oh. I'm still in my 40s. No, just kidding. So I do want to, this is what I'm going to cover. I'm going to answer the questions that you specifically had about solar restrictions. I'm going to list Falmouth's solar projects in the queue, list existing projects that we already have, solar projects we already have. Then I'm going to set the stage with ISO New England grid map and electricity management in our ISO New England. And then DPU's involvement with restrictions and caps that I'll talk about and how this impacts our future solar installations. And then what the next steps I have planned, we have planned. So that impacts the, impacts the strategic plan. Okay, so the answer is, yes, DPU, a mass government agency, has lifted restrictions, okay? It was 25 KW or smaller was allowed, but anything greater than that was restricted in a two-year study. in a two-year study. The reason is that everybody was fighting over infrastructure costs, okay? And I'll explain why that is occurring later. But the restriction has been lifted, so in this area, Cape Cod, this was a Cape Cod specific restriction, anything over 25 can be built, so we can move forward with a lot of the projects in the queue. The thing to note though, is infrastructure still needs to be paid for, so Eversource is slamming that fee on anyone installing the solar project. The reason it was held in the study for so long is that mass DPU and the governor did not want the rate payers to have to take on that infrastructure fee, like on your, you know, residential. So they lifted it, but we're paying extra fees. So two of the solar projects I have in the queue right now are taking on a much bigger fee structure because we have to pay for the infrastructure, okay? Important to note, and you need to think about solar as a program, because DPU and regulation is involved so heavily, these things will come up. Like I was so excited that this DPU restriction was lifted, but then I just found out about this ACA cap, it's cap allocation. Eastern Massachusetts now is capped, private entities that want to put in solar installations over 25 KW are capped, they can't move forward until these restrict, these caps are lifted. Lawyers are in the midst of it now, so it could be a month, it could be two months. So you just have to stay tuned and I'll explain why these caps are happening. Again, it's the mass DPU that's managing all of this. So the good news is that all municipalities in Massachusetts were given 10 megawatts of capacity of solar that we could install, we were sure of this. We have installed, and I checked with Mass ACA this past week, we've installed what they have on their table, three megawatts. We have seven megawatts left that we can build for the town. So the cap is, impacts private entities in Eastern Mass, but it doesn't impact us, the municipality. But we are capped to 10 megawatts total, so that's really important to note. As of now, unless these are lifted, we can't install more than 10 megawatts. Should I just whip through the slides and then answer questions?
A lawyer has a question.
Well, no, I mean, just, and it's very basic and it may not be that easy to answer, but give me, give me an example of something that's 25 KW or less.
That's so funny.
What kind are we talking about?
Here we go. Okay, for reference, I put this in so you could see.
I did see that.
Okay, so this is a 16 kilowatt AC system, so we're going with alternating current, not DC. DC's a higher number.
At 10 watts, is that, is that 10 kilowatts, is that annually or is that in total?
10 megawatts total, total forever until it's lifted.
All right, so that was my question, just, was it annually or in aggregate?
And we're supposed to, we're supposed to be carbon neutral by 2050 and how can we get there if we're capped at 10 megawatts? This is going to be a slide coming soon that Heather was alluding to, how can we meet these regulations if we have all these restrictions? But I'm going to explain to you guys how it all sets the stage so that we really can be strategic and think about how we can meet our goals.
Is it because they're reserving capacity for wind?
No, I'll explain it in a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a, this is on the, this is on the new senior community vet center, I don't know if you guys saw this, 300 Dillingham, it's a 16 kilowatt AC alternating system. So that's about the size we're talking about. These are small, 25 KW, imagine a little bit bigger, those are allowed, those are residential, they're not impacting the grid and infrastructure, we want to keep encouraging homes to install them in small installations because those typically won't be impacted by DPU trying to regulate the grid. Yes, Heather?
So how does the cap relate to that then? But those would be private installations that are capped, even if they're small, right?
The cap, small units will not, anything less than 60 KW isn't capped.
Got it.
Oh, well, it's not counted as.
It doesn't go against.
Our 10 megawatts, it doesn't go against our 10 megawatts.
No, but I was, I was talking about the private, you said private in Eastern Mass is already capped as of July, so.
Private, anything less than 60 KW for even the private.
Even for the private, they don't worry about?
They don't worry about. However, that could change. They told me it's going to, it's going to change. That's why with solar, we have to look at it as a program. It's not like putting heat pumps in a building where you're allowed to and you're encouraged and enticed to do that. Solar is different. There are benefits, 30% off, but you have to look at it as a program where rules change all the time. So whenever I give you guys an update, expect what I told you before to have changed, okay? So it makes it more difficult to manage, that's all I'm going to say. All right, so the next thing, what do we have in the queue? Because I think you guys specifically wanted to know this, and can you see it?
Yep.
All right, so what we've, since I started, we've put solar on the vet center, which is great. Hatchville Fire Station Rooftop is poised to happen next week. We did have to minimize the size of it because that DPU restriction. That has now been lifted, but again, they're charging fees, I don't know if I, did we go back to those extra fees is, is causing a lot of issues with people.
So we're going to stay with the smaller size?
We're staying with the smaller size because it was just lifted August 1st. We didn't know the timing, there's a lot of, a lot of variables going on, but it's supposed to happen next week, it's going to be 17 KW. We, the plan is to take the extra panels that were purchased and put them on East Falmouth Fire Station. We already have the quote, it's in the capital budget right now, they ask $50,000 local, it doesn't, we don't have to worry about the cost of the panels, it's just the cost of the installation in the neighborhood. All right, so we're poised to do that one as well if it gets through town meeting. We have two power purchase agreements in the queue right now, the water treatment plant rooftop and the senior center new rooftop. The lawyers are, are looking at the contracts right now, okay? Those are, one is over, well, still below the 50, about 50 KW AC, so we should be good to go on that. And the water treatment plant, now we should be good to go, okay? We'll just have to pay those extra fees.
Are these all PPAs or are the other ones owned?
The first one is owned by the vet center. Hatchville Fire Station own, we own it. So I have to, I'm managing them, I'll be managing them. The two in yellow will be PPAs. And they're taking a long time because once we really understand them, then they'll be much faster. These, next in the queue, East Falmouth Fire Station, it's proposed. Crooked Pond, we want to replace because Crooked Pond has solar. Anyway, I don't need to go into depth with all of these right now, right? But you could see, we do have a lot in the queue and I expect them to be installed in the next three years.
Good.
And you can see the different sizes, the wastewater treatment facilities is huge, 581. Any questions on?
Just, is that going to be rooftop or wastewater?
Wastewater will be ground mom.
Oh.
And hopefully rooftop for the combo. Okay, so what existing renewable projects do we have already? The Tom Hall Recreation Center is a small one, really outdated, it's getting to its 20-year. Crooked Pond and the water treatment, we might replace that one. The landfill solar one and landfill solar two. So I want you to remember the landfill solar one, it has 3,000 kilowatts, it's 3 megawatts, that's counting against our full capacity of the 10 megawatts, okay? So that, the other ones are too small to count against us right now, but the 3 megawatts is counting against us, so we have a capacity of seven more megawatts until we meet our cap.
And the wastewater one will count against us because that's large.
What about number two, what about, what about wind for number two? What is that, 1500?
Oh, because that's, that was done later and affordable housing, it goes to affordable housing, uses it, so we're not 100% ownership of it, per se, it doesn't count against us. So that's a strategy to think about.
Okay, so the only one that's counting against us is the 3,000.
Yeah.
And the wastewater one will.
And once that comes online.
Yeah, any, a lot of the new projects will start counting against us, the big, if they're bigger than 60 KW. Okay, so now, this is just really important to set the stage in more detail, so I sort of answered the questions on the first few slides that we talked about, but do you guys have an understanding of how ISO New England works in different capacities?
I don't understand why we need them. Why can't, you know, in the whole south, they don't have them. They have more solar than anybody.
This is, these are the ISOs, all right? They're regionally managed, they're structured very differently, like Texas is so different and isolated, they want to do their own thing. We are ISO New England, however, we do have connections with other ISOs, so we're working with other people.
Texas has a lot more landmass too.
And we depend on other sources of energy in times of peak demand, we need people to like run in, it gets very expensive in that situation. But their setup and structure is ISOs, okay? So that's sort of the background. Now, ISO New England is an independent system operator, the answer is that face, that empty face is really ISO New England. This is a really challenging management system. You guys probably don't want to know all of this, but it's really important to set the stage of how energy works and why we have caps, right? You want, there, it's a real struggle to manage the infrastructure for a grid. So there's a different players, you've got the generators to the far left, all right, they're actually like producing the energy, then you have a utility company who's delivering it. Those are the transmission lines and delivery, that's Eversource, okay? And National Grid. Then you have your energy suppliers, they're generating the energy contracts, then you have energy consultants who are managing and playing a role and making sure you get your energy, and then energy buyers, the end users like us. So who's in charge of it all? It's ISO New England who is third party, not government, but guess what? They want dependability, like that's their ultimate thing, is dependability, and they care about costs to some degree, but not entirely. So then we get different entities getting, being involved. Oh, this is the ISO, all right? So then mass, then you have mass DPU, that's a government agency in Massachusetts that wants to oversee this whole grid system to make sure there's reliability and the cost doesn't go nuts. So you have a lot of people managing, you guys get it with local government, right? You've got end users to protect, but then you've got suppliers, you need three years in advance to make sure they have energy that's going to be dependable and sustainable, but then you have to really care about costs as well. It's a lot to manage. So if people want reliability and then you have the government overseeing it, DPU, to make sure that the end user isn't sort of in trouble, all right? So can, can ISO New England deliver what's needed? This is just a quick snapshot to tell you available capacity like 18,000 megawatts, you know, they're trying to manage it, what the need is, at the time, what the capacity is. This image over here shows you our resource mix. In the past, it was, it was smaller gas, you can see 53% is, is natural gas right now, it wasn't always that way. We do depend on nuclear, hydroelectric, but then we needed to know and secure renewables in the equation. But ISO New England and entities don't love renewables, and I'll tell you why, they're intermittent, we can't depend and depend on them all the time unless you have backup batteries, and that's where we're moving forward in the future. But so the government, Charlie Baker, right, wants us to be carbon neutral by 2050, well how the heck are we going to get there using intermittent energy, solar and wind? It's going to be very, very difficult. So now you have, you know, conflicting agents in the game wanting reliability, keeping the costs low, but then caring about the climate and adding more renewables, it is a tricky, tricky game. So after this, after Charlie Baker signed the Climate Action Plan and they wanted to put renewables into the mix, they had to really be strategic about it because it's a three-year, we know where our energy is coming from three years in advance. And so in 2010, the Massachusetts DPU said, all right, every town municipality, you have 10 megawatts of renewables in the mix, you're guaranteed 10 megawatts. And then different entities were given only a certain amount of megawatts into the mix because it has, we need to know three years in advance where that stuff is coming from.
Like futures.
Futures, yeah, exactly, like futures. It's been so helpful for renewables, but it's also, we're hitting our caps now, and now what are we going to do? We can't meet the goals. So it's a tricky game and I, you know, if you ask Mike, I am happy to meet with anyone one-on-one and really explain this in more detail, but it's really tricky. And we're using a lot of gas, you can see over 53% of our electricity is fueled by gas. Yeah, so this note here is because ISO needs reliable sources and costs and net metering needs to be controlled, assured and capped. Now, ISO New England is running into trouble. This chart here, this map here shows you where our energy is coming from in New England. There are gas pipelines, there's hydro that are coming from the western Mass and Pennsylvania, there are hydroelectric coming from Maine, there's natural compressed gas being shipped into our coastline. It's a real struggle right now because in Massachusetts and New England, there's a strong sense of NIMBY. It's very difficult to get new pipelines built to deliver that 53% pie chart of gas. The LNG is being shipped up, well, guess what? Over in Russia, Ukraine issues, they're paying so much money for that, so literally we have ships with compressed gas sitting off the coast of Boston and they're getting offered more money to cruise over to Europe to sell that LNG there, and that's what's happening. So that's why you're seeing prices in New England are so high. If you look at all those other ISOs, I showed you the math, energy's cheap, much cheaper in every other ISO, New England is the most expensive.
Because of logistics?
Getting the LNG, they're shipping it over, pipelines, we can't get new pipelines built. There's a real strong sense of NIMBY, not in my backyard, it is really tough to get new sources of energy to New England. That's why our costs are so high and people, our local end user, users are feeling the stress of it, but not every other part of the country is dealing with this. So that's a challenge for us, how do we keep our utility bills low? But remember, the market is three years in advance where this energy is coming from. For ISO to manage it well, they need to know three years in advance where this energy is coming from. So we have to, but then we want to use renewables, we, by 2050, we have to be carbon neutral, how the heck are we going to do this? No one really is figuring it out. So when Charlie Baker proposed, you know, lifting the amount of renewables, apparently it's sitting with lawyers right now, they haven't figured out, they haven't actually laid the groundwork or made the decisions about lifting our 10 megawatt cap. So the towns can build 10 megawatts of renewables, but it's, it needs to be lifted, this needs to evolve with time.
What's our total energy usage? Like what would, what would 10 megawatts get us in terms of that 20%, let alone?
I don't know the percent, it's not ton for the town of Falmouth, I just know for ISO New England, because this is the energy usage. Oh, for scale, the landfill that we have, that phase of four, it's 4 megawatts and 2 megawatts. So we could for the town, put another large scale installation in, that's what I'm looking at, the wastewater treatment facility, we could put a large scale solar. I think we can do it with solar, but I'm not, when it's lifted, we, we're going to need more resources. All right, so this was the map showing you. Okay, so despite the physical constraints of getting a lot of energy to ISO New England, there are caps, all right? So the goal is to maintain a balanced market that allows renewables to compete with traditional generations, that's why you have this net metering cap at 10 megawatts, keep utility companies from passing the buck to the end user, that was the solar restriction, and then allow the ISO to be reliable with committed resources for three years in advance and established pricing. So it's a very tricky business, getting energy to the region. This is the latest one, so at the beginning, when I showed you that restriction that was lifted, even though we have to pay that extra 350. even though we have to pay that extra 3.57 per kilowatt, this new restriction that just hit us doesn't impact public, us. It does impact private, however. So it impacts the whole East Coast. So what's happened is, and I don't think you can see it here, well, can you see the zero number? For private entities, they are now sold out as of three weeks ago. So this might impact the solar installations that are in the queue waiting to come before you, like the golf course. The reason you probably haven't heard anything is because they had that first issue to deal with. But that just, that two-year hold was just lifted. Now you have a new one. They just sold all that capacity. That was just established in 2010 as a positive for renewables, but now it's filled. So we don't know what's going to happen. It is sitting with lawyers right now and they're negotiating. They want to lift that cap. The chart at the bottom, the table at the bottom is us. This is for the municipalities. We have, well, plenty, eight, you know, seven megawatts left to meet our 10-megawatt cap. My goal is to fill that, you know, in the next three or five years, I'm hopeful. But then hopefully they'll lift that cap as well. They're going to have to lift these caps. They have to, to meet Charlie Baker's Climate Action Plan. I mean, we have to, there's no way we can meet those goals.
I just don't understand the reason for capping it. Is it because the electricity grid just can't handle it?
This cap was established so long ago and was for, yeah, you have to know three years in advance. The, the number one priority for ISO New England, that sort of neutral entity, is to manage energy that's reliable for you. They have to plan out three years in advance. They need to know where that source of energy is coming from. They have to know for it to be reliable.
But that doesn't mean that they can't accept more. I mean, I don't, I don't get it.
They didn't want it to run wild. They have to contain it to, to be, they have to isolate it to know what they have. If, if you were to open the cap, you'd have no control over it, right?
And that would impact pricing, right? And you have to maintain a Hertz along the grid line. There's so many details. I was in the demand response business for three years. There are so many details I can't even go into today to manage, to keep a grid reliable. They're thinking about positives first. They need to be reliable. They need to know where that energy source is going to come from. And on hot heat waves, three days in a, in a row where it's super, super hot, they have to bring in ancillary sources of energy, so expensive, and then try to keep the cost down for us. It is very difficult to manage. It's not easy. So those 10 megawatts that we can install were originally like, oh my God, that's great for every town. Now that people are hovering to hitting the limit, they're like, we're going to, we're going to meet this climate objective. But then we have to be able to manage and make the grid reliable for everybody. Because in case of emergencies, you want reliability. That's what we want first.
So is that what the cap guarantees? I'm, I'm, I'm still not connecting the, the dots with the cap and trying to meet our goals.
The cap makes it easy for ISO New England to manage all the sources of energy, got it?
But what's troubling me is you've got 53% being produced by gas that we have trouble getting in. But then we've only got 10% by combined renewables, but it's capped. What is the logic of that?
Because they have to, the timing of it. They have to lift the cap to meet the goals. They have to. It's sitting actually with lawyers right now. It was supposed to happen when Charlie Baker introduced the law.
Yeah.
But then it's been stuck with the terms.
But it just seems so hard to accept when it's 10% and the solar is what, 30% of that 10?
It's so frustrating.
And we got everybody waiting to, to meet these goals. I think that we need to rethink this management entity. I don't think they're doing the.
Well, what's happening, it's, it's growing pain, it's growing pains and we are in the thick of it right now.
How could Florida and Georgia have no ISO and be successful? And they have solar everywhere.
There, I don't know if you want to, you have to look into see if, how successful it is. You know what I mean?
Okay.
Every, a lot of the ISOs are managed very differently. And we are in the growing pains right now in ISO New England. Absolutely, it makes no sense. But anytime we transition from fuel type to another fuel type, it is not easy. You know, from whaling.
Look at Texas.
It's so difficult.
They have had.
Texas had a huge issue with those ice consecutive days of ice. And then their, their market spiked. They didn't have the protections we have. So we know three years in advance in the market, how much our energy is going to cost. It protects the end user. In, in Urca, in Texas, it just fluctuates up and down. In that ice, unexpected ice storm, people were paying, I can't even tell you how much they were paying on their electricity bills. We've got protections at least.
The other end, when they, when the heat wave hit Texas, about this, the same thing happened.
Texas, its own bubble and entity, and they have no help from other supporting ISOs. We at least have hydro from Canada that we can get. It's a little more expensive, but we can get it in the times of peak demand. You know, in the summer, when there's three consecutive hot days, and we can't meet our needs, we're like scrambling for extra energy resources. We'll get hydro from Canada. We pay a lot for it. That's why you all have, you all have like, I, no, I cap, take. You need to pay so much more.
They pay nothing for it. Their, their energy is so, so cheap.
Then we'll try to get LNG, ship it up from Pennsylvania. It's very expensive during times of peak demand. That's why they're trying to get people to participate in demand response. That's the business I was in. If you commit to cut your energy use, we don't need to bring in extra gas. So they're paying people, they're monetizing people for that. It's such an interesting but very complex market. We are in the middle of the transition. We're trying to go to renewables to meet our goals, our government goals. But then we've got an antiquated grid that's somewhat isolated, but needs hydroelectric and pipeline. We won't, pipelines, no one's letting pipelines be built in Massachusetts. So those restrictions are causing prices to go up. We pay them, ISO New England pays the most for utility. We really pay a lot and it's affecting our end users. Because we're a great place to live, it's beautiful, but we don't want, we tend to not want to bring things in. Like we can't get a new pipeline bill. It's really tough to get the ships up here. But then Europe needs the energy more than we do.
But we got all these solar panels sitting in the garage waiting, waiting to go.
But now we have a cap on solar. So there's all these caps. And it's, we're in the thick of the growing pains and things are going to have to shift pretty quickly for us to meet our needs and be reliable and to keep it affordable. And that's the real trick, okay?
Do we need to like start sending letters to the president? Or how do we get?
It seems like, it seems like they're moving towards it.
I hope so, but it's not.
Yeah, they're moving towards it.
As quickly as we'd like to see, but with the constraints.
The cap of 10 megawatts for the town, municipalities get 10 megawatts, that's it. We've, we've used, well, you have three megawatts, we have seven more. So we need to be really strategic about where we're going in the future, which is great. But their lawyers are lifting caps right now. So we are in the growing pains. Things are shifting, but we are feeling it right now. But that happens with any transition in, in energy. Alright, so cap allocation. So this is the cap we have right now for private and public. Private, they hit the cap. So this is going to impact all those solar installations that are in the queue for the town, the golf courses. Until this is lifted, the cap has been met. For municipalities, we have 10 megawatts allowed. We've, we have three against us, we have seven more megawatts.
So we got another season of golfing over there.
Alright, so the next steps. Am I going on too long?
No, go ahead.
Alright, in the next steps, we want to install as much solar as possible to meet our 10-megawatt cap. Municipality about 10 megawatts, alright? So, you know, I'm looking at different sites. There's, there's a lot of potential we have, we want to meet it.
Should we strategize by doing a bunch of 60 or less?
The, well, we want to build big ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the wastewater treatment facility is a really good candidate, okay? We want to expand our solar overlay district to include the wastewater treatment facility. So we have to work on that because that is the best potential right now. We want to encourage residents to install solar because there's no cap that's less than 25 KW in 10, in some cases. If the ACA cap is lifted for private, we want to encourage private entities to do that because right now it's capped at 25 KW. And then we want to strongly consider battery bank packages to support our solar installations in the future. Because that can really help with grid reliability. Alright, so.
Let's go.
Do a few time for questions.
Two, two questions.
Sure.
First of all, how are you approaching ground-mounted solar? Because I got to say, I'm in general not a fan. Because we need green space and trees and a lot of other uses of our, our land. And are there creative ways that we could, I mean, you say support solar rooftop for, for private, but are there ways that we can get creative with leasing or something else to use the fact that we still have availability within our municipal allotment to start getting solar, say on the Falmouth Plaza, Stop &amp; Shop, Walmart roofs, parking lots? Like it's a huge amount of area that could be providing solar, but they're, they're capped.
Yeah, well, absolutely. We don't really need to cut any trees down to install solar. So I definitely, that's your last resort. We have plenty of, rooftop's the best option, first of all, it's the cheapest. So we're moving, trying to move forward with town municipal buildings, rooftop. Carports are another great option. And we're looking into that for the schools. Because without cutting trees down, I don't want to cut trees down. We don't need to. So that's what we're looking at in particular. And then, you know, we can do, we can own them or lease them. It really depends on which like financial structure works really well.
No, I mean, like where there's essentially private land, could we, like lease it and install? Could, could the town somehow install solar on the Walmart roof? Since we have municipal allotment and private development is capped.
The, if we don't own the land, we can't, we can encourage it though, for private entities?
I don't know how municipalities work, but our company, we lease land to solar companies. They come in, they permit, they do the whole thing, 25-year lease, and then we get reoccurring revenue from them. We still own the land, they own all the liability and the infrastructure.
Power purchases.
Yeah.
And we do a lot of it up there. On stuff that's already clear.
Could you explain the battery bank package and how that works? Would work?
Well, ISO New England wants reliability and they want to keep pricing competitive. And so battery banks could be very useful. They're really pushing for that. So if you put in a carport, let's say at a school, because I'm working with the schools, having a battery bank is so useful because it helps reliability.
So who has the battery bank? I mean, what is it actually?
And what is it?
Oh, they're like containers with.
Would, would we have them? I mean, the town would have battery pack?
The grid draws off them when they need to.
Yeah, no, that I understand, but I mean, what is it actually?
Where are they?
Where are they?
Well, like the, the, the solar field at the golf course, in the center of it, there's big battery storage.
To build with, with batteries in?
Yeah, it's just a giant bunch of batteries that are, the solar goes into it. So at night, you can still get power from that facility.
Yeah, you could have like container-sized battery packages or you can have small Tesla power wall batteries. And so that's really useful too. If you put a solar installation in, installing the smaller power wall Tesla batteries are really useful.
Something the town would do.
For reliability.
I mean, you say strongly consider battery bank packages. I mean, meaning.
Yeah, with carports.
We would develop them or have them available.
It's part of the system.
If we did a power purchase agreement, we wouldn't have to own them or manage them. And it improves reliability. And then in times of peak demand, the ISO can draw on the battery. So it just really increases reliability.
You're not asking for your own, for, for the town's power though.
So I had a question on that. So if ISO New England encourages that, and I understand why they would. So what, how do they incentivize, whether it's a municipality or a private sector? How, it, it makes perfect sense that they'd want to encourage it. Do they incentivize it?
Yeah, I'm trying to like remember the details of like financially incentivizing it.
Because there's a cost, right? Obviously to, to own it, installing those batteries. Maybe instead of 3.37, they charge us 2.95.
Would those battery packages be in each school parking lot or where would they be housed?
Probably in a container. I mean, if you have a solar array with a backup battery, it would be in a container.
Okay, but it would be in every place?
Yeah. The smaller Tesla wall packs are, need to be in a fireproof closet. You know, the lithium ion. And then it's a little more resilient. They really want resiliency to keep the grid going and keep costs down.
But that does ask the next question. Are, are they environmentally a problem, these battery packs?
Yeah.
That, or can be?
For solar, they will recycle them or upcycle the solar panels. And then batteries, they would, you can manage them environmentally.
I mean, you don't have to worry about leaking or any of that stuff.
You see the problems that ion batteries are having across the nation right now. I mean, they haven't perfected it by any means.
That's why they have it in a fireproof container or a fireproof closet.
All, all they're really doing, they're putting them in the basements and then just putting a piece of sheet rock over them. It's not, it doesn't seem safe to me, but it's what's happening.
Even outside, you could, you could install them outdoors.
I'm saying that, I just had a customer who chose to put it right underneath their master bedroom.
Oh, they did? Did you advise?
I said, like crazy, put it out in the garage. And the solar installer said, oh, this is totally safe.
Yeah, they're very, you know, loosey-goosey though.
They hired the solar contractor directly because I just didn't want to be a part of it.
So one thing, so the town has 10 megawatts available for capacity. We have, we have three megawatts already at one of the EDIC, at the landfill, one of the solar landfill. So what we want to do is install, I think, as much solar as possible to meet that, that 10-megawatt cap. We want to expand the solar overlay district to include the wastewater treatment facility because that's a great candidate for a solar installation. It could probably, I don't know the numbers for sure, but hold five megawatts of solar possibly.
So is that, is the town meeting more closed? Can we still add an item? Because we need to go to town meeting to change that overlay district, right?
Oh, I've been working with Jed and people on that about changing things. It's in the works.
Okay, good.
We want to encourage residents to install rooftop solar as much as possible. And that, this is where the committees really are helpful and Falcon can help. Because 25-kilowatt systems are capped. If it's behind the meter and goes directly, the electrons go directly to a building. We love that. Alright, so we can encourage as much of that as possible. If the cap is lifted for private solar, we want to support solar arrays, rooftop ground mount and carport canopies.
How do we encourage it though?
I just couldn't, that was.
We just say, hey, it's great idea.
What, what do you think we're going to do? Just get the word out or we're going to try and help them financially?
They set the cap 10 years ago when the Climate Action Plan in Massachusetts was developed in 2008. There was like, there's traditional sources of energy in ISO New England. Coal, oil, not as much coal anymore, natural gas. And renewables were not really a part of the market. But in 2010, Massachusetts was like, wait a second, we need renewables to be competitive as well in addition to these traditional sources of energy. To do that, they had to, because we need to know where our energy source is three years in advance to manage the grid, we need to know where this energy is coming from. So they, that's why they gave everybody 10 megawatts, every municipality.
We're not asking that, just how do we encourage? I mean, that's, that's really the only question.
How, how do we encourage private?
How do we encourage the private people?
Oh, I, I could help do that, but I'm really focused on the town.
Well, you can, you can help them by telling them what they have to do. But is there anything that the town can do financially or otherwise that will do what it is you say, and I think we all acknowledge should be done? I mean, is it a matter of, you know, again, helping them with some kind of financial incentive or?
A mandate?
What can the, what?
No, mandate?
Outreach.
What about when, when new projects come in front of us, making that a condition?
Well, I think we always ask, and I know that.
But now we can.
No, but we don't, we don't.
It has to be oriented.
We ask, but we don't say, if you're going to come into, you know, our town and you're going to build something, one of the conditions is you have to install solar. I don't see that we've done that.
Well, the planning board does require that they show where solar would go on a building. They don't really require that they actually do it. But they say it has to be incorporated so that the building is oriented in an optimal way.
Yeah, for the stretch code, it does talk about that. You want to encourage it, it needs to be solar ready. So there are, there are regulations that you need to be solar ready. You don't have to put solar on it.
Solar ready is just one step. And it's, to me, it's like, that's great, but it doesn't get us anywhere. I mean, so all I'm saying is that if we're serious about it, I think we should have something that says, you know, you really, not only do you need to position it, you need to show us that, that solar's. you really, not only do you need to position it, you need to show us that solar is part of your plan.
Well, then we have to incentivize it if we're gonna mandate it, right?
The problem is the private cap. Okay, so the town has 10, 10 megawatts total, we've installed three, there's seven left.
But that doesn't count if they're under 25, right?
Right. But it doesn't count what?
If it's under 25, right?
Does it count under 25?
So at least for, or if it's, why, it wouldn't count.
25 is a lot. 25, I was thinking about doing that on my own place, make a power, and we're only two buildings that are there, but two others offsite. And you can allocate those credits to other.
I think it's a policy issue that maybe we should talk about further. I don't think we should take up Stephanie's time, but, but I think moving forward, again, if we're serious about it, I think we need to put more teeth behind it. That's just my suggestion.
Well, that's the question, how do we?
How do we do it?
How do we get, so, another day again.
Yeah, and maybe it's a policy issue. Any other questions for Stephanie? Wait, it's really.
You're at 45.
All right.
Sorry, no, no, this has been, you know, very helpful, really.
It's really, really interesting.
Yeah, it brought it down to, you know, to our left.
Yeah, so we.
So then we can at least have an understanding of it.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Lunch has been delivered.
Okay, hold on. I'm gonna do one quick thing, we're gonna, so that we can take a break and then jump into long-range planning. I'm gonna move, discuss the future of the old water department property, because I don't think we need 10 minutes. I think we just need an update, because I think we have a plan for that, or we have a suggestion for it.
Oh, so you want me to give that kind of an update right now?
Yeah, I think we do that now and then we jump into the capital plan after lunch.
So in your packets, I have just a few pages of information regarding the property, the building on Palmer Avenue. It was considered a storage area and garage back in the 1930s, I believe, when that building was constructed, by the town, by town staff. Two weeks ago, myself, Peter McConerty, well, Peter led the tour of the building. Several representatives of the Beach Committee, Barb Schneider and her vice chair, Jo Alexander, Jo's last name. Thank you, thank you very much. Was part of that tour. And Maggie Clayton, the Beach Superintendent, was there as well, as Brooke, the Deputy Superintendent of Beach. So it was a great tour, we walked through it, it has a lot of potential. The Beach Committee is currently reviewing multiple options. You know, one of the things we're gonna have to do is take a look at the cost of renovation, because there will be a cost. I don't want to hazard a guess at what that might be. But we did have the building commissioner take a look in terms of ADA compliance issues. And as you all may know, there's an upstairs office area. And if we restricted that just to staff, we wouldn't have to put in, like, an elevator per se. We just have to have future reasonable accommodation steps in place that we can adjust if there's a staff member that has access issues. But I think there's a lot of potential for that building. And again, they're still kind of going through the Beach Committee and the working group that Peter Johnson Staub is kind of heading up right now, working with the DPW Director and the Beach Superintendent. We're gonna come back with a, come an updated report to meet, so I can ultimately make a recommendation. But I think, having participated in the tour, I also saw a lot of potential. It's a shame, in my mind, to let that building just kind of sit, because London sits idle and vacant. More damage, as you all know, there's a lot of vandalism and whatnot that takes place in the building. There's a lot of interconnectedness between this potential project using the Palmer Avenue facility as a future beach office use. It dovetails really nicely, I think, with our current plans to construct the oblique playground on that section of Goodwill Park of Palmer Avenue. Having that presence, staff presence, there's a lot of issues and concerns from the public safety folks about not having a constant or at least regular town staff presence in that area. So that'll go a long ways also to address some of those concerns.
I like it. The only reason I asked to have it was I just wanted to see it sit there, not doing anything, because it's a nice little building.
Have there been any other possible uses of the building besides as a potential for a beach house or the Beach Committee going over there? I mean, have you looked into other possibilities, the police station?
So we have not looked at it with the rest of the police station, but that's a whole other process. We, you know, and we've hired that OPM.
Well, I just throw that out as, have you thought of any other possible uses for that building? Or are we just, I'm not saying it's a bad use, I mean, it sounds to me like it might be a very good use. I'm just wondering if there have been any thought of any other possible utilization?
Didn't the 300 committee look at that a long point? The road race, I think, looked at it a long point?
I've been told 300 committee certainly looked at it as an option. And the bike lab wanted it replaced, but now they've got it bought over at the ticket park.
Yes.
And the 21E's already been done on that property, too.
The West Coast, sorry?
The 21E, they used to store old pipe there and had an issue back in the day.
I think there were other entities that looked at it, but then I think the Beach Committee came up next.
And it's very preliminary, so I think it's part of, you know, you mentioned the police facility. I think that the OPM and architect wants to get them engaged. We have multiple properties already kind of in the queue that we looked at, but this might be one of them. Again, we haven't looked at that specifically for the police facility or any other municipal use. But I would encourage it. And again, it's just a shame in my mind that the building's got good bones, is what Peter McConerty said, and it's.
It's been vacant for a little while now, too, hasn't it?
I think the policy is we need to do something with it, yes.
Has there been any conversation about potentially acquiring the adjacent property that's currently on the market? We're looking at moving back into that, that location?
Not formally, but as we did the walk around a couple of weeks ago, that certainly was a topic of some discussion. I know exactly the property we're from, too.
Any other questions about that property? Okay, why don't we break for lunch?
Okay.
Okay, we're back and we're looking after our lunch break, and we're going to go right through just review of the long-range capital plan with Mr. Renshaw.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. So this presentation, most of it, is gonna be familiar to some of you. About 18, 19 months ago, Finance Department gave a presentation about how we managed debts and the concept of debt drop-off. I think it was Doug requested, decided, talked about how we're gonna manage the, what was, and I'll just give you the bit of bad news, well, not bad news, realistic news. So what was last year's capital, 10-year capital plan of $524 million? Based upon staff's input over the past, you know, as you know, Monday, you're gonna be presented with the 10-year capital improvement plan for adoption and then sending out to Finance Committee. That 524 million is now $738.6 million in debts over a 10-year period. And it grew significantly because we've added multiple projects that weren't in the plan prior. The police station, we talked about the police station, we've now budgeted for the police station in the capital plan. We have some numbers that are tentative, we won't know concrete numbers until we start working, obviously, with the OPM and the architect. School has some planned school renovations, renovation or renovations in the capital. You have copies of a sneak preview of what you're gonna see in more detail on Monday of the 10-year plan, fully filled out, totaling that $738.6 million. So about $135 million additional fund, additional expense with regards to school, planned school renovations. And Lori is still working with School Committee on what that might be, what buildings that might be. But we're projecting about $135 million in renovation costs to one or more of the school facilities. And then, obviously, you know about the wastewater plants, most of those funds, most of those costs were built in. So what I wanted to do is spend the next, I think we have 40 minutes for this topic. Hopefully, we're gonna have some time for questions and answers as well. But I want to kind of talk about kind of the strategy, overall strategy. As you all know, pay-as-you-go is everybody's preference, myself included. We want to avoid borrowing, but some projects, particularly those over $2 million, right now, we have a best practice in place, if not a policy. If it's less than $2 million, we look to pay as you go, we like to use cash. Anything over?
Can I interrupt you for one second and ask you a question? As I looked over this, and I understand the junk, but I also feel like there are things on this capital plan that have added to your bottom line, but they weren't on another capital. So this, to me, looks like really, like it's really, really, really complete? Does that make sense?
So, so, so over the past couple of years, there's been a lot of emphasis on making sure that we're capturing everything and then also capturing, you know, the funding sources in particular, if it's gonna be free cash. Obviously, no big mystery, we want to limit the use of free cash. We're always looking at alternate funding methods. And last year, as you all recall, did a great job, the Finance Director, in identifying some unspent dollars in other articles and whatnot that have been truly hanging out and not being used. So any, anything that we can do to limit the free cash use is what we're focusing on. But to answer your question, Pancy, yeah, I think this is a more realistic view. All in, you know, what we're projecting are gonna be our 10-year capital needs.
Maybe this is a silly question, Mike, but I mean, did you look at anything and then decide not to put it in? I mean, are there things that, you know, kind of crossed your mind or somebody's mind, but you just?
That's a great question.
Didn't think that, you know, it warranted being in this town?
Yeah, so last year, and I could give you like annual, the past two annual kind of examples. So in the, in last year's capital plan, there were about $2.5 million in unfunded requests that were made. And it runs the gamut, right, from vehicle requests to some other facilities, issues and concerns. So, yeah, there are always items that is, myself and the Assistant Town Manager and the Finance Director meet, and we always do every year with all of the departments, there's things that don't make the cuts. And in a lot of what we talked about earlier today with regards to strategic plan and tying, and I mentioned that, you know, with regards to these capital requests, and you'll see it on Monday, the actual request sheets, they have to tie it to a specific strategic plan, key priority area. So I think it's making people think and demonstrate kind of the, you know, is this a priority? Is it priority one, two, or three? We've also gone through that exercise. So we, if it's not a priority one, and we're in a year where we're looking to minimize these free cash, that, last year's capital budget accounted to some of the $2.5 million that not make, that not make the cut. Now, sometimes that is deferred, in other words, if they didn't get that F250 in FY '24, then we'll look to fund it in FY '25, because there's a need. The need didn't go away, we just had higher priority issues and concerns that particular year that we could defer it.
Because we don't want to be where we were 18 months ago, $136 million short, you know?
Correct, correct.
That's the concern, obviously.
Right, right. So, so again, projects under that $2 million threshold, typically, we finance through cash, you pay as you go. And as you all know, that cash can be made of a free cash, which I've already mentioned, capital stabilization funding, and then unused bond proceeds. Or again, some of the article monies that have been sitting around for years not being utilized. So I think we've pretty much shaken that couch cushion, and we don't have a lot of those articles that have been unexpended sitting around, but we'll continue to look into our due diligence with regards to finding every dollar that's out there that we can utilize.
Mike, can I ask a question?
You can.
Where, how are we lowering the cost of general government so significantly going forward? Is that just moving items out of that budget into other budget items?
So lowering the cost of general government? What we're trying to do is look at, you know, the capital costs versus operational costs and moving, making sure that it's kind of a realistic, if it's an outgoing recurrent cost each and every year, then we'll place that, we'll move from capital to operational. But what specifically are you referring to?
Well, I'm just saying on FY '25, general government proposes 3, 786, 3 million, 786. And then, as we go forward, it goes down. Is that just because we're buying a lot of new systems and new infrastructure, or?
Oh, through the capital requests? Yeah, I think, I think we're literally becoming more efficient and reducing, maybe, or reducing some of our expenses. I did. So you're looking at the broad categories at the top, there's a one-page handout.
Right.
That kind of summarizes the summary sheet of the capital plan.
Which is what I'm looking at, yeah. I'm seeing that, the first item, general government, at 3, 3 million, 786, but then, next year, it's like 2 million, 796, and then it goes down to 1850, 27, it goes back up, and then 28, it goes to 14 million.
Well, and again, the general governments, we have those divided up into roughly half a dozen or so categories. Public safety, general government, community developments. So those are all based upon staff input, right, as we, as we build the capital plan? So those, those costs, those expenses deflate away from year to year based upon what we think those, the capital needs are gonna be from one year to the next. So we are, we are realizing some efficiencies, but quite honestly, that variance from one year to the next, that just has to do with how we're programming and trying to spread out those capital needs over a 10-year period, making it a little bit easier to manage.
So that's the reason why in 2028, $14 million, obviously, that's.
Correct.
A big, you know, big expectation.
Is that the police station?
It would include some of that. It would include some of that. And again, if you look at the larger, the 11-by-17 sheets, those give you a little bit more of that detail. This one-page, you're limited, is basically just trying to be a kind of a 30,000-foot over.
For fleets come do and stuff like that, too.
It's really helpful.
Since this is my first time through this, can you just clarify requested versus proposed for FY '25?
I sure can. So I kind of alluded to this a little bit earlier. So a couple of months ago, we started our capital budgeting process. Departments were required to submit forms, basically, that showed what those needs were. And the list was, when we combined, combined it, rolled it all up, it was 81.8, almost 81.9 million dollars. As we went through the vetting process, again, myself, Peter Johnson Staub, Assistant Town Manager, and the Finance Director, meeting with all the departments, we kind of triaged and made those decisions as to whether or not it was a priority one, or two, or three. And again, based upon, it gives us an opportunity holistically to look at the overall budget, having met with all the departments and making decisions. So sometimes those decisions to push or defer until a future year are made at the point where we're meeting with the department heads. Sometimes it comes after we've had a chance to look at the entire budget in its entirety and make reductions. So, and for example, in FY '25, this current budget year, there's about $3.78 million in the general government function that was requested by the department heads. We reduced that by about $1 million, because we had higher needs in some of the other areas that we have to, have to push the good money around.
So proposed is you're moving it forward, requested is the department heads.
Exactly, that's a better way to say it, I guess.
Yeah, so proposed is.
The proposed, the proposed is whatever you'd be recommending to select board, which in turn is gonna pass on to Finance Committee's recommendation.
Well, you cut almost a million out of that.
We did. In that particular function, right, the general government function.
Just that, yeah.
But you can see in some of the other areas, you know, that reduction was less. Okay? And the next slide, and again, you know, I've talked about, now we've gone from a little over half a billion dollars to almost three-quarter of a billion dollars. Completing, completing the budget process, working through these capital needs, you all know, it's about decisions and competing needs and a really finite funding capacity, looking at, again, less reliance on free cash as possible, reducing that reliance on free cash. It really speaks to the importance of having that robust, comprehensive strategic plan, because, and I mentioned this earlier this morning, we're really trying to get the department heads to think about how they're prioritizing their needs and tying that directly to the select board's strategic plan. And demonstrating that we're actually trying to accomplish some of the things that are on that plan. And that costs money to do. So that's the nexus and the connections we're really trying to focus on, tying our efforts at the department level to your plan, is kind of the policy level document guiding all of those, all of those projects.
And we might hit a wall and realize that we might have to scale back some of our hopes and wishes, right?
We are gonna hit that wall, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. It's approaching, and we have to, and again, tough decisions are gonna have to be made with regards to property tax rates and whatnot, because there is gonna be a point. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about where we're at now in terms of that managing that debt and without looking at any type of a tax increase. As you all know, and there's some examples here, the Outfall Project, Amy Lowell and her staff are continuing to work on that DPW, the Monont Road Bridge Construction Project, $10 million. That project is purchased for, and we recently received permits to begin that project. Police station renovation or new building, as we all sit in this room, although we have hired, we're soon to hire an architect or an OPM or as project manager and architect. I'm seriously of the opinion that the current structure is not gonna be adequate, we're looking at a new facility. Right now, we don't have a hard, hard number, but we're probably looking in the vicinity of $25 to $35 million in that new facility, if that's the direction we end up going. I mentioned earlier the $135 million roughly that are programmed in the 10-year CIP for FY '28 that the school department is looking at. Again, they're still kind of vetting that process, but we can project in the next 10-year period expecting $135 million on one or more school building, school facilities. As you all know, we're looking at pickleball, we've recently, or in the process of making. As you all know, we're looking at pickleball, we've recently, or in the process of making renovations to our skate park. And then just it runs the gamut of additional capital needs from Balkans, Marina Balkans, to beach facilities, replacing the main library roof, school roofs and whatnots. We talked earlier about coastal resiliency and the costs associated with that, protecting and shoring up our, literally, our infrastructure along the beaches.
When you look at long-range budgeting, do you ever consider that maybe we should go back to enterprise accounts or dedicated funds for certain items?
So, we're kind of, we're having that discussion now. Myself, Assistant Town Manager, Finance Office, we're having a discussion about looking at proprietary or enterprise funds. You know, typically, my experience is that obviously the utility side, water, wastewater, is enterprise or proprietary fund. So, that's something that we're having discussions about. It's phasing out. I think what we're going to be practicing now or trying to produce is kind of the cost currently, how the general fund is kind of subsidizing and supporting the water and wastewater. We're going to show that, right, so the community can kind of get a sense for how its taxpayer or general fund dollars are going to support the water and wastewater utilities.
Right.
And ultimately, you know, it's in my opinion, and I've seen it work very well in other communities, ultimately, I think you want to wean yourself off of and move away from the direction of the general fund supporting utilities. I think it should be fee-based, you know, the users of the system should be paying the fees.
Right.
It's just about, when we've done for decades like we have this way, I think it would be unwise to flip that switch, so to speak. So, I think we just have to look away, and that's what we're talking about now, how we transition away from kind of the general fund supporting and subsidizing. I don't like that word, supporting the utility operations. How do we gradually get ourselves off of that?
I think it's the right word, though, actually, because it is subsidizing.
It is a subsidy, it is a subsidy, yeah. And, you know, and we just have to make sure that we're smart about how we implement it and run it out.
Are we still considering the Northwest Fire Station? I see that under your capital needs.
It's actually, yeah, it's actually still part of the plan, although we don't have any, and I'll talk a little bit about that kind of forward.
Okay, I was just curious.
It's one of those conceptual projects that we don't have hard numbers for, but let me go through, again, the title of this slide, I think you'll see it, is going to illustrate kind of the debt plan going forward over the next 10 to 15-year period. What I'm going to show you are projects that have already been approved and some of those proposed projects that we can't fund without a property tax increase. And as you can see here, those projects, capital projects, that are identified beyond this upcoming capital fiscal year 2025, just concept level plans only, so that our numbers are not concrete and hard numbers yet, but we're working towards that. We're going to have to basically do a lot more sharpening of the pencil and crunching numbers. And then, again, the input from select board and the community in terms of the prioritization of some of these projects is going to be important as well. And one of the primary goals as we go through this process of managing the debt, and I'm going to show you some graphs that kind of show how we do that, and the Finance Department has created, I think, a really great, robust debt management tool. It's basically a software that Ed has put together that allows us to kind of pull levers, so to speak, based upon changing interest rates, a lot of variables with regards to, you know, the 10-year capital load that we're carrying. But our goal ultimately is to create the best model possible that takes into account all of these different variable factors. As you know, and this is just a long list of some of those factors and variables that I just mentioned, interest rates, those fluctuate, and that's a concern of any municipality, any local government, of being able to project that. And again, through this modeling, software modeling that the Finance Office has prepared, allows us to kind of enter new variables as things change. So, we have, we're very adept at making changes on the fly, so to speak, with regards and showing the impact of those changes, whether it be interest rates, or whether or not we get, if you see further down this list, one of the big questions right now that we have is the Clean Water Trust Program, are we going to get 0% financing? It looks like we may, but if we don't, what is the impact of that ultimately on our ability to carry that service? And obviously, grants, we project in the 10-year CIP. I think that's one of the major additions that we made the last year was accounting for different funding sources for all of these different capital projects. So, we're really reliant, we're trying to become more reliant on grants, but realistically, you know, I don't want to list as a grant funding source something that we don't have pretty good confidence that we're going to receive. So, if it appears in the CIP, we're relatively confident in that funding source, that grant funding source.
Or is it a couple of instances also that the enterprise funds can make you more eligible for grant funding because it makes it more clear that the grant is funding that resource?
Hmm, that's a possibility. I mean, I think you could argue that. I mentioned the Monont Bridge construction project, and again, this slide illustrates capital projects can be funded without any kind of a tax increase. This has been an ongoing project. The cost has increased significantly since the inception of concept phase of the project, but we're confident, and again, it goes back to 2014. We, as you all know, were delayed in Army Corps of Engineer Review and Permitting. We finally got that release, so that project's going to start.
Is it because I think the DEP just told Peter that the numbers are stale again on their end?
Yeah, so we're having some discussions with DEPs. Those are a little bit of a concern. I think that we're, from what I'm told recently, I think we're going to be in good shape. We're looking at that now. We have gotten some communications from DEP that that could be an issue.
That could.
I'm pretty confident that we'll be in decent shape. And again, this is a list, a short list, but kind of over a longer period of time, obviously, of those projects that we believe, based on this debt service modeling, that we can accomplish without looking at any type of a tax increase. And I won't go through the entire list, but it includes projects that you all heard of, the Woods Hole Sewer Forest Man, obviously, the Outfall Pipe, $80 million that we're projecting. And this is a moving target with regards to the Outfall Pipe project, but we're projecting that coming to town, maybe in 2030, maybe in 2029, but that's kind of where we're at right now, at $80 million. And we have a category, the last two rows basically are future capital projects to be determined. And again, what I'm attempting to show with this slide is that based upon our current debt service modeling and that software that we're using to kind of manage the debt load without carefully to consider any type of a property tax increase, that we can carry about $45 million in additional projects in 2039 without having any impact on tax rates, which is important, obviously. Probably the most significant and important slide, and this is just, this is a product of that software, and again, the system that Ed Centeno, the Finance Director, has put into place, and working with several folks throughout the town in putting this in. So, that, the gray line basically is the important line. That's basically the annual debt service that we carry, a little over $14 million. The orange line is the line that basically ebbs and flows. We want to keep the spikes down to a very minimal. So, $14 million, that gray line is our target, I should say. That's the target. We don't want to exceed $14 million. When we do, due to changes in interest rates or other spikes, we have to come up with supplemental funding through the Capital Stabilization Fund or some other means to kind of balance that out. So, $14 million roughly is what we want to kind of ideally carry in terms of annual debt service, and that's where we're currently at. So, any kind of peaks or valleys in that, we have to account for, certainly have to account for the peaks. And in 2028, I don't know if you can see that real clearly on the screen or perhaps in your packets, but 2028 is kind of the key target for us. It's that $1.3 million roughly that we see as the peak, based upon all the projects that we currently have in the pipeline and those projected, you know, approved, but not approved yet, but projected. $1.35 million is what we anticipate is that offset, the supplemental funding that we would need to keep that gray line basically level at $14 million. And it's important to mention because, last year, recall, we talked at town meeting about adding additional funds to capital stabilization from the free cash amounts. We saw record levels of free cash last year. We anticipate seeing another kind of a banner year in terms of free cash with the closeout of this fiscal year. So, it's going to be important in order for us to have that buffer to apply towards this kind of variation, to increase that capital stabilization fund, so that we're able to meet that $1.35 million over the next two or three-year period. And as you look over the entire 10-year period, that amount that would be needed to kind of, again, offset or supplement peaks and valleys, certainly the peaks is about $3.5 million. So, it's going to be really important to have kind of that robust capital stabilization and debt stabilization fund, although there's been some talk, Peter and I, Peter Johnson-Staub and I are talking about going to town meeting perhaps in November to consolidate and move. We have two capital, we have two stabilization funds now, which we think is a little bit redundant, but debt stabilization and capital stabilization. We're discussing the possibility of combining those two into one capital stabilization fund. This is more effective that way, combining both amounts. And that would, I think, allow us to be in a position again to meet all of those fluctuations over the next 10-year period.
Do we have sort of a policy for that, or is that just the town manager's discretion?
We do have a policy, and it's in the financial policy. I should make copies of that. We do have that policy that we keep a minimum balance within that. I think we changed it to a percentage this year.
Yeah.
But we do have a financial policy that speaks to kind of the minimum amounts that are in that capital stabilization.
Thank you.
Any questions on this slide? I'll kind of walk through that kind of quickly. But again, it's meant to show, this is a product, again, of that debt management software that Ed has put together, that we can be creative, that allows us to pull different levers in terms of if we see a spike in interest rates, allows us to kind of apply, again, the supplemental funds to the capital stabilization or debt stabilization. I mentioned this next slide, again, talks about some projects that are being looked at now, the police station being one that might require a tax increase or some other funding source, importantly. Either a tax increase or some other funding source. The police station replacement is one of those projects currently that's in the plant that does throw those numbers off, right, in terms of being able to carry to meet that $14 million debt service obligation. We don't have enough projects falling off through the debt roll-off to basically make that up, so we're going to have to look at additional funding sources or potentially looking at a tax increase, which is obviously everybody's last resort.
Now, traditionally, we've been really successful with debt exclusions because we identify an individual project, bring it to the voters, and say, would you consider this? They know they're voluntarily raising their own taxes temporarily, and so that's been really popular, so that's great. They have a great history of success with that.
Yeah, I've been told that, and obviously, I haven't had the experience of going through that yet, but that's an option, too. That's a scenario that may play out. I mentioned school renovation projects, project or projects, we're not, again, they're still vetting and finding out exactly what their needs might be. Recreational facilities, the pickleball courts and skate park, multipurpose fields, that's another item that has been approved, just hasn't moved forward yet. And importantly, and the last bullet point on this slide, and that's why Monday's meeting is going to be important, and I wish there were maybe multiple meetings to consider it, but on Monday, you're going to be considering the 10-year plan, again, the $738.6 million now of that plan. And, you know, whether or not the priority of the projects kind of meets what you feel are the needs of the town. My recommendation is, because it's been vetted over the past couple of months, that we fine-tuned it and made it as close as practical to meeting the needs of the town. And I said the last year when I proposed last year's capital plan. Costs are increasing, and I'm confident this year, going into this year's capital budgeting process, that we're meeting all of the needs that we have, the priority needs of the town. There's not a lot of, there's not any unnecessary costs or unnecessary capital expenses in this budget. These are all needs that you're setting. And again, to Bob's question earlier about, you know, Heather's, the proposed versus the requested, there were tough decisions that were made early on in the process. There's more opportunity on Monday night when we actually propose the plan to have those discussions, and ultimately, at the town meeting floor, you know, after the Fin Count, Finance Committee has an opportunity to hear them as well.
In anticipation of Monday night, is there a timeline that we have to adopt it by? I mean, I know there is. What would that be?
So, yes.
Go forward.
So, I know the Finance Committee, obviously, the sooner we can possibly get it in front of the Finance Committee, the better. I think Keith is the chair, Keith Wego is already trying to schedule some of the Finance Committee meetings. Ultimately, my recommendation is going to be, you know, that we, the select board, consider approving and moving it forward, I should say. You're not approving, you're just allowing the process to continue in the Finance Committee on Monday night, on August 26th. That would line up, I think, with the Finance Committee's chair's current proposed schedule of the Finance Committee meeting. As you all know, they send out Finance Committee representatives to meet with each of the department representatives to kind of further vet all of these projects. And ultimately, over a month period or so before the warrant closes, September, the second meeting in September is when we're actually going to close the warrants and move towards publishing the articles, so we're going to have to have that finalized. So, the more time the Finance Committee has to chew on this and that, the better.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope we would just have constructive comments, but not binding and not actually make changes, but just let it keep going, because we can always comment later, even if it comes to the town meeting.
I mean, on the floor.
I agree. I agree. And I think that the important piece, as you just stated, was that the Finance Committee needs to start their work.
Right.
So, letting it, letting the process keep going, not to approve or disapprove, but to make it keep going.
And you're going to have other perspectives on the floor, too, that may change.
Yeah, and you all, I mean, I'll probably comment that maybe we should always keep in mind that the police station and those specific type of things would be better served by the debt exclusion, but I'm not going to try to take it out of the budget.
No.
It would make our bottom line look better, though, you know, if we had, that's a scary number, that's $728 million.
Well, on Monday, I think that's a perfect opportunity to talk about debt exclusion versus carrying this, we're showing it now. I mean, I think that's the opportunity to have those discussions.
Right.
So, the last slide, I'm going to wrap it up, and then if there's any more questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Again, the purpose of these slides, and again, it was redundant for some of you who've seen them a year and a half or so ago, was to let you know that there is a process in place that the Finance Department has put in, and they monitor this, and they're able to, on the fly, literally, as conditions and those variables change, make adjustments. So, we do have a plan to manage. Unfortunately, the big message I'm carrying to you this afternoon is that because we've added close to another quarter million dollar, or quarter, over $200 more million towards the capital plan, there's a point, that threshold, where, you know, we're going to have to get a little look at alternative funding sources, or again, a property tax increase or something in exclusion, because that, that's the issue. We're running out of options. We're not retiring enough of our existing debt that we're carrying fast enough to basically offset some of these large capital projects, right? And I mentioned a couple, like the police station and the school renovation projects, that they know they have to.
They're absolutes. I mean, they have to go through what is happening.
We have to, and then, you know, and also, you know, the building study that we're, you know, we've interviewed and looked at a couple of different consultants for that comprehensive building condition study, you know, we're about to start looking at hiring one of those folks, and there's going to be a couple-month process, but once we get the results of that study, right, I mean, there's going to be, those are unknown capital costs at this point, where they look at not all 82, but a subset of the 82 town-owned buildings. We don't know that number yet, and that's not, that number is not programmed into this current 10-year plan.
And there's other strategies that we could consider, and like the Lawrence School, maybe we should consolidate the schools, or declining population. I hate to even bring it up, but it's something we need to probably think about.
Yeah, and I agree, and I think, you know, that I think the superintendent, the school committee would be the ones that would be considering that for sure. The only other thing I would say is just keeping that police station renovation replacement at the top of the list. I mean, we made a commitment, and that has been, should have been, what, 10 years ago?
Probably.
We should have been looking at that.
Certainly, and so we've just wrapped up, again, the interviews and selected the OPM, so we'll be bringing that proposal in front of you shortly, and then hire the architects, and have the OPM, the architect, and the town working together, site selection, and then coming up based upon that process with a hard number. But that is certainly at the forefront of our business.
And can we get updates, like as you're going through that process, either from, you know, Chief Lawyer or somebody, so that we just know that, what steps are being taken and what the next steps are?
We'll definitely do that.
As soon as, and you can get the narrative of that, the renovation part, I wouldn't spend, if it was me, I wouldn't spend any more money on something that he knows a dead horse anyway with renovations of the existing.
Not talking about renovations.
But, yeah, I mean.
Yes, life-saving stuff.
All money you spend on. All money you spend on trying to find a way to do that, knowing in your heart of hearts that it's, it's not viable, is a waste of time and money.
So we're actually wrapping that process up.
Good.
You know, I'll keep this brief. So we had half a million dollars at town meeting appropriated for that, for the, for the current facility and addressing the life safety issues. We've worked off most of that list. Now what we're trying to do is find out how much of that money in that article might be left over so that we can apply it towards the cost of the architects.
Excellent.
And, and OPM for the, for the actual, you know, new facility construction. Real quickly, a couple of major kind of takeaways from, from this last slide. And I asked Enzo Teo to kind of update the current numbers. So you can see $200 million can be authorized over the next 16 years and keep us within that, again, that, that gray line on that chart, that $14 million roughly debt service limit. But unfortunately, the bad news is that some of the projects I've talked about already, the 135 million plus the perhaps 30 to 35 million dollar police facility. You can see we're quickly approaching that 100 million dollar threshold, so that's the bottom line. We're adding projects that are needed over the next 10 year period that are going to put us in that precarious position where we're going to have to make tough choices.
Prices are going to continue to go up.
They are.
They're never going to come down.
Where does the $14 million annual debt service figure come from?
Yeah, so basically, it's the, it's the current debt obligation that we're carrying right now for all of the other projects that are kind of, have, have, have been, have been. Been financed through bar, that's our, that's our debt load right now, so it's a little over $14 million.
I mean, that will increase or, I mean, it, it, does it stay stable?
Well, so the $14 million threshold, I mean, that's where we're at right now.
Right.
And it's calculated, again, the, the part of this modeling program is to make sure that as projects fall off, that we have planned in the 10, 10 year CFP that we pay off, we retire the debt and pick on new debt. It's been, it's a direct offset, so we're able to, as one window closes, we're able to open another window, so to speak, and, and initiate another project. Yeah, the debt load will increase, but.
We, we hope other things will come up.
Yes, but we don't have.
But it's falling off right now.
$14 million, that's just a goal that we have?
No, no, it's.
Our job is to maintain that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the hard line, Bob, right now, that we can, we can, we can carry that amount of debt service based upon our, our, our current property tax rate without having to look at any type of exclusions. It's when we go beyond that $14 million that we have to.
So we have to look at it.
Pulling these different levers while the capital.
That's why we have the debt stabilization fund, so that we bring it back down.
And the second, the second really important thing on this slide that I want to kind of wrap, end with is, is, is the, as I mentioned, five and a half million dollars additionally last year, we recommended placing in the, in the capital stabilization fund. We're going to make the same recommendation again this year. Right now, debt stabilization, capital stabilization, I mentioned we were talking about combining those two. We, if we did combine them today, we would have a little south of 12 and a half million dollars in a combined capital stabilization fund. In my mind, it doesn't make a lot of sense to keep, carry two funds for basically that accomplish the same purpose. That number's not going to be adequate, we're going to have to continue adding to that 12 and a half million dollar capital stabilization in order to make, meet those, those spikes, you know, the orange line in that chart above the, above the baseline debt service load here. And again, that's the main lever that we pull, is having funds in those accounts, the stabilization accounts, to be able to apply towards those peaks so that we don't have to look at the property tax increases or go the exclusion route. And I think that was it. Any other questions? Kind of went through that.
Comments? So I, I have to say, I'm a little, I guess, surprised by the incredible year to year variability in the, the capital amounts from 33 to 220 back to 80. Is there, is there a, a benefit to trying to level that out at all? Or any ability to try to level that out at more year to year? And then my other question is that a lot of these upcoming projects, I guess, feel like they're necessitated by the fact that we haven't always taken the best care of our buildings and our properties. Is there also an increasing operational maintenance component to our budget that we're going to need to be, that's not part of the capital group, but, but that as we build these new things, making sure that we take care of them, that we have the budget to, to do that?
That's kind of a review right now though, isn't it?
Yes.
Well, the building condition, yes.
All right, Mike. Two great questions, so let me go in reverse order. So yes, there is an initiative underway right now. So, so we had half a million dollars at town meeting appropriated for this comprehensive building study. In order to get that passed, you know, I felt it was important to commit to doing a better job maintaining our assets, right? The buildings going on. So, so working through DPW, Peter McConter is the director, and then Greg Endicott is the facilities manager. We do have a, I'll call it preventative maintenance plan that we're working and putting in place. So that we're, and, and this comprehensive building condition study that we're hopefully going to launch pretty quickly is going to give us that baseline and then making sure that we're investing enough money. If we can't do it internally, because I'm not, you know, we, we're lean and mean in terms of staffing and, and facilities department division, there's no exception to that. And we're always challenged trying to fill vacant positions. And, and we can probably add more positions, to be quite honest with you. So, and I'll give you a perfect example, Town Hall, we just started that renovation project replacing some of the fascia and some, and painting. You know, slapping a new coat of fresh paint, once we get that, the basic repairs done, it's going to extend the life of that building. So we do have an initiative underway. I'm going to ask the select board to hold me accountable for holding DPW and Facilities accountable for making sure we're able to implement the plan. So every, every, every year, there's going to be eyes based upon this condition study. We're going to have a number that we know is going to be required to get it up to standards. But every year, we're going to have preventative maintenance where it's a coat of paint, just somebody putting their eyes on the facility, walking around the outside perimeter of a building and noting all the deficiencies. I'm going to share this with you all, and, and I mentioned Town, Town Hall. One of the issues that contributed to the ride of fascia and soffit is you walk into the, to the office door just outside of my office, were clogged gutters. And in my mind, that's not acceptable, that we would allow gutters to get that clogged and obstructed, that it would, it would cause that kind of damage. So again, that's the preventative maintenance that we're going to be engaging in going forward. And whether that's a six month, depending upon what the task is, we'll have kind of a, an interval period that that, that work is going to be done. And if we can't do it in-house, then we have to look at, you know, perhaps contracting that out. The bottom line is it needs to get done, somebody has to conduct that kind of periodic routine maintenance. Otherwise, what could be a minor fix, a minor repair after five to 10 years of neglect is going to turn into something much larger, so. So that's the answer to that question, there is an initiative underway. And, and again, I'm asking the select board to hold me accountable, and I've told DPW and Facilities that I'm going to expect that they, they meet those inspection intervals. And the other question, is there some way to kind of levelize this? That comes at, at this time of year, as I meet with the departments and we look, and again, a lot of the leveling, Heather, happens after I've had a chance to meet with all of the departments and I know what the number is. And I, and literally, you know, I look at the free cash, and like I said, I try to minimize the use of the free cash, at least where we can. So we can invest that in other areas like capital stabilization. A lot of times, to stabilize it, you can see in the summary sheet from FY '27 to '28, it goes from 90 to 220. Well, a big chunk of that 220 in FY '28, I mentioned, right, is, is the projected renovations. And again, school department, school committee are still vetting what that's going to be. Maybe it's one, maybe it's multiple, but we're pretty confident in that, in that $130 million number, so that's a big chunk. Now, could have some, some of those been projected earlier? Perhaps, I mean, I guess you could make the argument that, you know, if, if we had programmed some of those costs over the past five years, obviously we'd be in a better position. I think, you know, again, if we defer that again, I think you always, you're at a risk as an organization by deferring maintenance to try to level stuff off, that, you know, it's going to cost, you know, multiples more down the road, so we want to avoid that. And again, that's why I think this capital plan, the 10 year plan, is getting more and more of a realistic kind of indication of where our, our needs are and the cost of that.
And I think we could probably, on Monday, we could maybe just delineate some of the projects that could be separated out from the total budget into that category, that potential debt exclusion. So maybe we'll, we won't probably get it done on Monday, but just discuss the concept of getting two categories going so that we can have a better sense of, you know, maybe it could be more leveled out.
Well, that's why this meeting was timely in, in relation to, to Monday's select board meeting, where we're going to actually pitch this and propose it to you. Because I'll be prepared to have staff and I be able to answer those questions and maybe start that process of trying to place those, those, those projects in those different categories.
It's certainly a fiscally responsible approach in relation to separating those, letting people know that at least we're in tune with what, what the immediate needs are and how that gets paid for by reoccurring these.
Yeah.
Am I wrong? It just seems to me like in this capital plan, you have included everything right down to vehicles and everything. And I'm not sure they've always been in the capital plan.
I think that's why it's so different.
And this is what I'm trying to explain, this is, okay, good, so I'm not.
It's far more succinct.
It, that's why I jumped from 524 to 738, in part, was because over the next 10 years, you've included everything right down to vehicles, which I'm not so sure has always been so specific before.
Yes, I think it, it hasn't been as specific, but I think we added, the 524, the last year's capital, 10 year capital plan number was a lot more accurate and realistic than perhaps you'd see in the past. I think the major reason Nancy from going from 524 to 738 this upcoming year, the proposed, is just the enormity of some of the projects.
The big projects.
Ticket items.
Right, and, and exactly, the big ticket items, I get that. I just think that we need to recognize that you are attempting to put everything down and not someone coming up in two years and saying, well, I need an ambulance.
And we might change some of our ideas, like the Northwest Fire Station, it's a very expensive proposition.
Right.
And I'm still not convinced it's the best idea.
Yeah, so in this plan, we actually have, and I, you can, you can look under, in the fire rescue section, there is some, some site land acquisition costs associated with that. So we are moving forward with the Northwest Corridor Station. But again, that's exactly the input, you know, when we get to that stage, when we're looking to allocate hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to, to site acquisition.
We may have other priorities at that point too.
We might, and maybe that changes and that Northwest Corridor falls off the strategic plan, which is guiding our, our work as a staff to, to, to looking to allocate money for site acquisition.
And also, we never really did finish fully vetting the equity, you know, the realistic effectiveness of that combination plan. Because right now, even though the North Falmouth Station is a little too far north, the West Falmouth Station is pretty strategically located. And if you look at the old map that was drawn by the Fire Prevention Safety Division or whatever in 1950, they have these things exactly in similar locations. So we're pretty close to really good locations, pretty good service. I know the West Falmouth Station is old and tired, but if it could be effectively renovated and an ambulance bay added, I would save a ton of money.
I was just going to say that, so one competing piece is you have this Northwest Station, but we're spending money to look at revamping west and putting an ambulance there.
And buy some time.
Yeah, so to me, that Northwest falls way low.
Yeah.
So, but I get the concept, and that's why I appreciate you including everything in here, because then we have something real to work from to say, these are our priorities, these are going to go to the bottom of the list.
It sure gets us thinking, right?
It does, it's, it's different than what I've seen before.
Great.
And oftentimes, the decisions that we're going to have to make are not, if they get done, they're, when, when do we slide them down that 10 year scale? But again, as everybody knows, it's not rocket science, the further you slide that project down the scale, the more expensive it can become.
But Mike, you're, you're, sorry, your preventative maintenance plan that you're pounding on right now is certainly going to help that, which wasn't being helped with all these reviews of existing monies that should have been spent years ago and, and facilities that should have been upgraded and maintained that weren't. Once those come up to spec, all that money kind of comes back to us.
Well, it'll extend the life, it extends the life, and maybe allows us to realistically push a replacement down the road.
Right.
A few years if we're, if we're getting it, you know, the condition up to where it needs to be and then maintaining it, it can extend our life.
Yeah, I think we're also getting the benefit of the fresh perspective that you're bringing, because much coming from outside, in particular, you look at everything.
Yes.
In a holistic way, so that's another reason why this is.
It also, it also puts surprises off the list. You know, if an ambulance or, or trucks or whatever are needed, we know they're there, it's listed. So we knew they were coming, it may not be for two years, but we know it's coming. And I liked being able to see that, even though it might be a couple of years out.
Well, we have a fire engine replacement in the plan coming up for this current year. And, you know, what was probably a, a, a million dollar project is now 1.3. And, and if that weren't bad enough, the lead time to constructing that engine is getting longer and longer as well, so.
You're well over a year right now.
Paying more for it, and it's going to take longer to get it delivered unfortunately, so that's.
Wareham, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Scott.
No, no, Wareham just waited 14 months for a build.
Yeah, I'm hearing it's 18, because we're going north of that.
So I mean, at, at what point does something like the Northwest Fire Station drop off so that you don't have to be carrying it as a possible, you know? And are there other similar projects that you have to carry on the plan because you're looking at it, because they're in the strategic plan, but they're not really.
Great question.
On, on, on our priority, at what point?
We should have spent five hours.
We dread that.
We should have spent five hours on the strategic plan, I'll be honest, an hour was not enough, and 90 minutes wouldn't have been enough.
I could take a guess at what that would be, if we find out that it's viable to add an ambulance bay, and we spend that money, then we'll take that Northwest off and just keep it as a future consideration.
Reliability with the existing infrastructure will dictate what your future needs would be, I would imagine, right?
Well, I've read the McGrath, the McGrath study, I think is what was the catalyst for that Northwest Corridor, so I've read that. And, and it's probably, you know, we, and I'll work with the fire chief and, and we'll take a look at, and I forget what year that was done, 19? It's not all that, it's not.
Sounds right.
It's not all that old.
It's not that old.
But it, it probably needs to be looked at again. And again, like you said, based upon the, the, the report back on, you know, the viability of adding a bay to the, to Station 4, or Station 4, that may change those plans.
The one inherent problem with that study was that it was, the parameters of the study were that how to best suit a five station model. And that's very misleading to the consultant.
Yeah, and that was not what we were.
Yeah.
If that was.
You're looking at your direction to maintain and operate six stations, and that's, that's what we're trying to do.
But I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind with that McGrath report, because that was a constraint that they were under.
And when you set those parameters, they were obliged to, to do it from that model.
Exactly.
Okay, can we move on?
Can I ask one?
Oh, go ahead.
One or two kind of nitty gritty questions about things that actually I, I don't think, I, well. Coastal resiliency and beach management are both inherent as line items, both of them with zeros, given that we just talked about need for beach nourishment. Is that something that would be considered capital improvement and capital spending?
Great question, so I just had that discussion with the assistant town manager and the finance officer and director. What we're looking at right now is carrying that, the beach nourishment that was currently 25 is in the operational budget. I'm proposing to leave it there now, Heather, I think you could make arguments for it being in capital, but it is a recurring annual cost that some people say we're not, we're not, we're not expending the 25, and I think it should be three times that, that we are expending. So we're going to leave it in operational, that's what it's carrying a zero right now in the, in the capital plan.
And then also not in here, presumably because it's so early stage, is beach department facilities.
Right.
Renovation or something like that, right?
Yeah, so, so the working group right now that is taking a look at different options is going to give a report back, and then we're going to have the, the, the decision of, you know, where we look at getting hard numbers, spending the time and the money to, to develop a, a better plan. So, yeah, we don't have those costs right now, but I'm, and I'm pushing to get the, the responses back and the report back from the working group. And, and is it, and, well, I can't speak for that group, and I don't want to, I, I think the Palmer Avenue site is viable, and we're looking at it. The other site that they're looking at, you probably know, because it will become available, is, is the current police facility. And what will we, what will we do, the building is probably, needs to be scraped, but we'll reconstruct a new, I'm just speaking generalities. A new beach office at that site. Now, I've got some concerns based upon traffic congestion, although we're going to signalize man and scrotum, so that'll relieve some of those issues and concerns. Putting too much in within that area. I think the Palmer Avenue site, although some would argue that it's too off the beaten path. I think removing that additional congestion of people going to get the beach stickers and whatnot from the downtown area, so to speak, is probably, probably a scenario. So I think we're not too far off from having enough information to make a decision as to whether it's going to be renovation of the Palmer, you know, the storage and garage, or water department storage and garage, or new construction, and what those costs would be. We've got a good idea of, you know, cost per square foot for new construction. We've got a good idea of, you know, cost per square foot for new construction. Now it's just a matter of getting experts into the Palmer Avenue site and what it would cost to renovate that.
The one advantage to that site is all the folks that are coming down who have houses in Boston or New Hampshire or whatever can just stop on the way into town, grab their sticker, and the kids will be reminded, Mom, don't forget the beach sticker.
Any other questions before we move on? Okay, let's move on to the update on the comprehensive town hall parcel evaluation and analysis. I'm not sure you'll need 30 minutes, but we did.
So in your packets, as you all know, early last year, I think shortly before I came on board, the town planner, again, working on a study, an evaluation of all of the town-owned But I think you should have a copy of that in your packets, right? Jed talks about basically a four-step process that he implemented at the town.
Well, we don't have any, we don't have any identified parcels at this point.
Not yet, but you will.
We will, right. But so we have just Jed's analysis.
Exactly. So Jed, Jed asked me, he actually gave Peter Johnson Staub and I a presentation last week, Wednesday, and he's close to having it finalized but not quite there yet. So he didn't have anything for me as a formal presentation. So this just gives kind of the general parameters of what he's done and the results of that. I can tell you, share with you right now that I'm focused on the September 9th date for two reasons, as far as the formal presentation and then my recommendation. The September 9th date is important because it's gonna give him enough time to wrap up the slides, the presentation itself, but also because that's when the select board is gonna be asked to vote the warrants, vote the articles and execute the warrant. So that's our deadline for getting that done. And I'm hoping, as it stands right now, I'm kind of jumping the order of this presentation a little bit, but my goal is to have three or maybe four parcels identified of this, of these 22 parcels that Jed has identified as viable housing development parcels, having three or four of those on the November town meeting, voting warrants, having three or four separate articles attached to these parcels. What we're doing right now is just kind of vetting, doing the final vetting of what those parcels are going to be. But I think, I think the development community is gonna be excited, and I think they're gonna be viable. And it makes no sense, in my opinion, as the town manager, and I've said this in other organizations I've led, you know, I don't think a municipality or county organization should be landowners. And right now, we're holding onto a lot of land, right? 500 of, what was that, I shouldn't know this by heart, over 500 parcels, town-owned parcels that we're holding onto. You know, some of those aren't developable, but many of them are. So what Jed has taken, basically, is that 576 total properties, the total universe of town-owned properties, and has applied various filters to kind of get down to specific in regards to housing development, 22-part properties that we feel have really strong development potential. You know, one of the major criteria that we looked at was those parcels over two acres in terms of the developability for housing. Do we have parcels that are less than that that could be kind of low-hanging for a developer, perhaps? But we're trying to move the needle again, and some of the parcels are relatively large, 30 and plus acres that we have in our inventory that we've just been sitting on. And so I'm hoping, you know, some, one or more of those is gonna be included in these three or four articles for November town meeting. And I wish I could share more particulars, but again, September 9th is the date that we're gonna have that formal presentation to select board.
Can we also keep in mind that all those undevelopable parcels might be great for community gardens? Because that's something that I heard the farming Falmouth people say that they were about to know if there are any type of parcels like that, and I attended their meeting and I said I would look into that. I think this is the perfect opportunity to not just disregard those that are not developable, because that's a great resource. I went to the Emerald Farm on Wednesday, and they had a potluck dinner, and the whole sense of community, because they're all gathering together there and working on that plot, truly enhanced the community. So we get to that all over town.
So, yes, so the, I mentioned that the three separate filters that Jed, the town planner, kind of ran these 572 properties through, 576 to get to the 22 for housing. There's also a subset of the remaining properties that we feel could have potential municipal uses, and in my opinion, whether that's a sports field or a community garden, I think that would fall into that municipal, municipal use category. So we've got, based upon all the work that Jed's done over the past year or so, we've gone from 576 properties to, down to 132 that are over two acres, a fifth of those roughly, we feel are adequate and viable for housing development, and the rest could be other municipal uses. And by other municipal uses, it runs the gamut from community gardening to police facility. Again, we got, our, my direction is look at the town-owned parcels, we're not looking for land acquisition with regards to police facility. We have enough parcels in our inventory to eliminate the land acquisition costs. So we're looking at, you know, a subset of the properties that we're not allocating for housing could be one.
I think a two-fifths of the ESL program, too.
Yeah, true, true.
Get our neat sports fields with covered parking areas and facilities.
Pickleball court.
Bro.
Pickleball, that has come up in the conversations. We literally looked at all the properties, aerials, and you'll see this on September 9th.
So, as I understand it, 22 kind of passed the mark that they had good potential or potential for development. You're weeding it down at this point to three or four that might make it to the warrant. What will happen with those other properties? They'll continue to be evaluated and filtered and recommended over a period of time? That's the goal.
Yeah, and my goal is to release them, you know, vet them or turn them around, release them as quickly as possible. I just want to make sure that we have a process in place.
We may be able to use some of that to trade off for open space in other projects, too, these non-developable, the ones that aren't developable.
Potential. I mean, there's, there's existing fields right now that we may, you know, look at swapping and moving around, and there's so many different variables right now that we're looking at. So I'd like to, I'd like to maintain some of these parcels, but, you know, release them as we can.
I like the idea of sports fields because we still have a deficit.
We do. Peter tells me, Peter Johnson Staub tells me six according to the plan. And if we build a synthetic surface, you basically divide that by two. But anyway, yeah, we do have a deficit.
I do like the idea of allowing more gardens to be built. I do like that idea. Okay, so we're hearing that they will get, yeah, I'll get right to that, that they will make town meeting, they will make the warrant.
So I'm pushing. I had a conversation with, with the town council about the, is that September 9th date actually etched in stone? I think we've got, yes, my, my goal is to have those articles, or have those, have those properties as part of art, three or four articles for the warrant.
That was my question. Go ahead.
I'll, yeah, withhold full judgment until we actually see the full presentation, but I will say that one part of this that kind of gives me pause is the idea that we are prioritizing the largest undeveloped parcels that we have in this kind of screening process, especially given the conversation we had earlier today about prioritizing redevelopment and thinking about the climate and other benefits of our forested lands. I just want to make sure that we're, we're keeping that in mind as, you know, as we're going through and selecting where we would actually target for affordable housing and making sure that we are actually prioritizing redevelopment in that process as well.
Perfect, yeah. And I think when you see the full presentation, and again, I mentioned in the summary, it's a really high-level summary of some of the parameters, the filters that the town planner applied. You know, some of the properties are landlocked, so road frontage obviously was a, was not a strict need, but certainly one of the priorities that we looked at was road frontage. But understood in terms of redevelopment and placing a priority and redeveloping lots, I think that's gonna be an opportunity for some of these, you know, less than two-acre properties to be redeveloped.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move into the coastal resiliency action plan. And Heather, I think you wanted this on, am I correct?
Yes, and I feel like we, you know, we started to touch on this this morning with the strategic plan and the management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure, and it's very much paired also with the next agenda item, which is looking at the Surf Drive report in particular. But it just jumped out at me that this is a June 2021 report, and it's been on the strategic plan for a few years to review, accept, adopt recommendations and that sort of thing. So thought it would be great to actually take a look at the plan and think about what, from the work of this committee, we want to move forward, integrate into the strategic plan and start moving forward.
I think I had also mentioned it as well, without having spoken to Heather about it. I think I had mentioned it as well.
You know, there's, there's a large number of recommendations in the study, one of them being specifically the results of the Surf Drive study, and then some broader, some broader recommendations as well. I, I've spoken with a few folks who were part of this committee just to get some more of the backstory, and I will say the same, the thing that keeps coming up as kind of a really high-level select board action that might help catalyze a lot of different actions would be to adopt a policy for all, for all town activities, town projects, and also proposals that come before the town to evaluate those in light of coastal resiliency goals. And this kind of came up with the solar earlier today, right? Would we mandate it? Would we incentivize it? Maybe shy of actually doing either one would simply be to put nudges into all of our processes to say, hey, how does this align with coastal resiliency? And actually, that was just one of the filters, you know, that Jed was using, right, in terms of what zone and that sort of thing.
Doesn't Tom Tom kind of do that to a certain extent now on all coastal properties with respect to?
Just regulatory, they just react to projects.
But I mean, on permanent projects, they still have some kind of input on.
Oh, totally, yeah, but they don't.
So we have references on.
They don't just dream of coastal resiliency planning initiatives.
No, 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 I understand that, but I'm saying they're still aware and there's still some kind of data to start from with what's being done right now permit-wise, what the federal regulations that are being, are adhered to are, right? So there is something being done, but not enough, obviously.
Yeah, but this is a whole different take on it. This is like planning for the future, designating areas that are not gonna be buildable, rebuildable, and it has a lot to do with property rights. And then also, there's legal considerations where if you put beach nourishment on private property, then they have to grant access to the public, and a lot of owners are pushing back. So there's a lot of forward-thinking policy decisions that is in our ballpark, really. So that's a lot that we're gonna have.
Let me ask, let me ask you a question, because I'm not an aficionado on this. What is the first step of this? We keep talking about this, it keeps talking.
Resiliency person.
And where are they?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. It's kind of a moot point without having that person here to set standards, in my opinion.
There are some things we could do.
I mean, you have a professional coming in that's gonna be vetted, that has obviously some kind of ideas on how to kick this off.
And I kind of resign myself to waiting for that, but, you know, I see your point. We have been sitting on this for a while.
I'll just throw my, so I have looked at, I made copies, and you probably have, it's not an executive summary, it's, it's the pages that include the actionable steps and goals from that study, which I thought was great.
The Surf Drive study, right? Yes.
This is, I think this is the coastal resiliency, it's got the, breaks it out into Woods Hole, Woods Hole Group.
Yep.
Okay. Well, they did both, then.
Yeah, I mean, they did both, that's the Surf Drive, yeah.
Okay, all right. But it really talks about some really concrete, specific strategies, right?
And what we have is just with respect to the Surf Drive, the Surf Drive study.
That's the Surf Drive study, yeah.
Right, well, that's the only one for which we've actually done.
Well, so the question is, I guess, one of the threshold questions is, is there support for doing any other assessments of any of the other areas that have been identified, right? Because it wasn't a big criticism that the only area that was studied was Surf Drive, whereas the committee found, you know, 20 other.
We have to start somewhere, and that's, that's the line of defense for downtown. There's a huge swath.
No, I realize why we stopped, why we did Surf Drive. My question is, is there support for looking at other, any other areas and doing similar studies at some point?
Oh, sure, there's gonna have to be, but, I mean, that's why I said.
I guess, but when, I mean, that's my concern. When are we going? And I understand what you're saying, Scott, I mean, this.
I don't even understand it yet, because we've kicked this thing around the room from all angles, and we don't have someone heading that department yet to even take this on.
But we, I agree with you, but I think we, I think we can chat about it a little bit so that we can give this person an idea of what we're, what we're thinking about as far as what he or she should be, you know, looking at.
I think, I think this Surf Drive study and the actionable steps, the development potential actions is a good guide for the future, near-future coastal resiliency specialists. And I'm looking at one, for example, right, Floodproof Mitchell Bathhouse. So correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the Surf Drive bathhouse. We're looking to relocate.
Which is gonna, right.
Which is, which is getting rid of.
Exactly, so that's my point.
Yeah, we won't do that, yeah.
So, and so one other point I'm looking at right above that is Floodproof or Elevate Surf Drive Sewer Lift Station. I'm not an expert in what that would cost, so I need to have some expert look at that. But here's what I'm looking for, some directions to whether that will incorporate some of these actionable goals into the strategic plan. Because I'll be honest with you all, not using the Woods Hole Group study is my.
Because it's off-base.
Well, I mean, I think it's very well done, but my direction from you all as a board is in the strategic plan. I know there's a lot of great work and a lot of great studies that have been done, and unless it's in the plan, the strategic plan, the five-year plan, I'm not looking at 10 different studies and picking which ones that I feel I should be following. I'm looking at the strategic plan that you all adopt every year. So I'd suggest maybe that we decide, if not today, then soon, what goals are attainable and realistic that I can start having staff put numbers to, so that we'll give them, because I don't know, maybe it's $500,000, maybe it's more to floodproof and or elevate the lift station on Surf Drive. But that needs to be in the capital plan, and right now it's not. So, so, so I need, I need some direction, what, and we're, like, we're not gonna have enough time this afternoon, but taking this plan going forward and taking one, well, taking some of the goals and placing them into the strategic plan, that allows you to hold me accountable for getting this stuff done and in turn allows me to kind of direct the staff.
Finally creates some forward inertia.
I can't pick which ones of these on this page.
Here's another point that I think, for me, was a major stumbling block on pushing this forward. The majority of this is abandon and retreat. And when we were in the meetings, Woods Hole Group representative Elise Leduc said, the way she phrased it was, now, obviously, there's gonna be some roadways you're gonna wanna reinforce and elevate in order to preserve travel lanes, access to the resources and et cetera. And the group almost unanimously said, oh, no, we don't want to elevate new roads, we don't want to do any reinforcement, we don't want to do any of that, we just want to walk away. And I was not in agreement with that, because to me, Surf Drive is a great example of a place where we might consider some of the, and some elevation of the road. Combine that with additional annual beach nourishment to replenish what we're taking away, because any type of structure on the coast takes away from your resiliency. You know, it's a kind of a counter, counterintuitive measure, but at the same time, you have millions of dollars of property value between Main Street and the beach that I think is worth saving for at least 70, 30 years or so.
They're forcing infrastructure to go up in those areas. All new construction is going stilted because.
Exactly.
So that will, that will play right into, if you elevate the road, it will enhance people's ability to lift their houses as they go and we, without, because we have to maintain our water there, too. And if the wa, if we have no subsurface water collection because of flooding, doesn't matter how high the road is, it's gonna shed water onto private property.
So there's just a lot of big decisions to make.
So what, we're gonna try to like focus, so as you, as we look at the current strategic plan under management of coastal natural resources and infrastructure, one of the ongoing goals within this area is consider elevating roads. So we have one study, the Surf Drive study, Don Bop suggesting maybe we consider the application of more studies, but I think perhaps adding is a, is an objective under this key result area. Develop a plan and cost estimates for elevating, you know, key sections of Surf Drive. I don't know. But, but having in the plan that I'm following, consider elevating roads, doesn't give me enough detail as far as what the select board wants to do over the next five years.
I think however we phrase it, I think it's incumbent upon us to bring this up. I think however we phrase it, I think it's incumbent upon us to bring this up and have it focused so that the town knows that it's part of our long-term plan in reference to Surf Drive in particular.
It was the first one chosen for study for some reason. I'm assuming it was some logic that was applied.
Well, it's an iconic road in Falmouth.
And, yeah, and also, it's right next to downtown, and we've got town hall to protect.
It's probably the biggest, you know, it's probably the biggest of all of them.
The most dense property value.
So, I would say to, something like to investigate the cost of potential lifting, you know, or raising up Surf Drive each road, because I, I don't think we can direct you to do it right now, because you don't have enough information.
Right, exactly. And another thing is, we don't want, maybe we don't want to put in elevating that lift station, because we're considering and planning to relocate that whole sewer line.
Right.
To outside of that housing zone.
Exactly. I don't think we should touch that.
So, it's one or the other, so we don't want to spend money on a lift station and then relocate the pipe.
But we don't know either one of those yet.
Well, we do pretty much. DPW is already doing long-range planning.
What's long-range, though? How many, how far out?
Oh, 10, 15 years? I don't know. But it's right now, it's just conceptual on paper, where would it go? But the engineering department is working on, where is that new route?
So, I mean, the, I guess in, in my mind, there's, there's a whole bunch of potential actions that are, that are in that Surf Drive report, but there's also, and I know these are crazy-looking figures, these, what, what they actually did was put together scenarios of different sets of those actions, right? Pathways that actually get us all the way out to seven feet of sea level rise beyond 2070, right? And understanding that the choices we make now affect what we're going to be able to do, and we have to start planning for things like if we're going to elevate a lot sooner. And I think, in my mind, the kind of direction that I would like to, to see us give to a coastal resiliency specialist is, all right, this is what Woods Hole Group and, and those involved in this process mapped out as the preferred pathway. Is that the pathway we're going to adopt? And then a coastal resiliency specialist can start working on the steps on that plan and figuring out what the costs might be. And the thing is, there's, there's one of these figures, there's a pathway recommendation just in this report, just for Surf Drive, for two different sections of Surf Drive, as well as the bike path, as well as sewer infrastructure, and the bathhouse and parking lot, and the neighborhood, right? Like, there's, there's already seven different pathways, eight different pathways to consider and adopt and start working, not just in the Surf Drive. And then, if we want to say, okay, and we recognize that this is one of, I think, 13 different kind of areas that the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee broke Falmouth up into, we're going to have to do this eventually for all of them, so which, which ones are the next priorities to start this, this process for?
And/or the coastal resiliency person may have a different idea of creating the pathway. I mean, they, I'm sure they'll take all of this in, but they may also have experience and other ideas of how we need to move forward.
And they might say that priority is, number one, is like replacing the drawbridge and all the mechanicals in Woods Hole.
In Woods Hole.
You know, that's a big part of our community, is the amount of ability for the people that work in those areas, as you know. It's a big part of our economy. And years ago, I built a waterproof bulkhead to protect that underground control center for that bridge, but this time is running out on replacing that whole thing, because, I mean, that bulkhead will withstand a couple of floods here and there, but when we're continuously inundated, it's not going to hold up. So, I think the new coastal resiliency person is going to find out where all the town's inherent infrastructure assets are at risk, and probably try to put the finger in the dyke on all those firsts before we go on wild, you know, beach studies.
It's good to be up to 2070, but if we, we need to be able to die, identify something and put it down on our five-year strategic plan if we, if we have that input. And I think, again, with that person in, in place, it's premature for us to set up a program for them, if that may not be, I mean, we're vetting this person, who is obviously a professional and has, I would hate to be saddled with something that was non-collaborative, going right into a job knowing that I may know something better and have it already memorialized.
Right, disagree.
You do?
No, and they may disagree.
And it's already memorialized in our strategic plan, which ties an anchor around there now. I think that, once they're hired, we should have, we, we have this discussion.
And as, as you pointed out already, there's a lot of decisions to be made just on the Surf Drive study, because there's so many different ways to tackle it.
Yeah, I don't think we're, we're saying that we want to set up a program or list any specific things that, that are going to be done. I just think that the strategic plan in general, with respect to the report and the Surf Drive in particular, I think just needs some acknowledgement that we're looking at it and that we're thinking about, you know, the future and, and having them...
I agree.
That, that's all, I mean, I think until we place the person, we really can't make any specific, you know, undertakings or tie ourselves to any anchor. But I do think that, you know, that, that, that we should get the word out in the plan that we know this is an issue, we know it's a problem, you know, and we're going to, you know, start looking at it. However you can frame that might...
And we've, we've met their number-one goal, which is to be higher.
Yeah, right.
So, so that's, that's a jumping-off point.
But Nancy, just to your point, yeah, we did it, but it's taken us a long time to get there. People are frustrated, right? I mean, it's taken us a long time to get this person on board, right?
But the, I, I don't think that that, that, I think that's just the way it works. I don't think we can, I think we've done our best.
I realize that, but I want people to know, I mean, I understand how difficult it was and the steps we had to go through to get it. You know, I'm just looking for what are we conveying to the public there, that's, that's all.
That makes sense.
They're saying, jeez, they have, the board hasn't done anything with this. I mean, that's what they're seeing, most of the people. And that's all I'm saying. I think we just want to get the word out and, you know...
Yeah, so, November Town Meeting last year, I heard the creation position.
Right. And we did it. I'm, I'm not saying we couldn't have done it any quicker. I'm not criticizing it, I'm just saying what people on the outside are seeing with respect to what have we done about coastal resilience in general and Surf Drive in particular.
As I mentioned, we could not even get the $25,000 a year spent on beach nourishment. We just had a real struggle to move the ball, so...
One thing that drives me crazy is spending time and money developing a plan, which I think that, I'm no expert, but I think it's, this is a good plan, to have the new coastal resilience specialist review the plan. And whether it's the pathway, Heather, I haven't looked at that too closely, I'll be honest. Is the pathway a combination of these different strategies? Because if I look at this a little more detail, there's probably, you know, we abandon this or retreat, whatever the term is, and we protect this. So, the pathway is a combination, right?
The pathway is a combination, and it's timings for when we shift from one strategy to another, because beach, in all of the pathways for the kind of middle section of Surf Drive, it starts with beach nourishment now, and it's a matter of when, when is that no longer feasible, and we switch to other strategies, and which other strategies, and what do we have to do now to set ourselves up for that switch?
So, I think that's a good launch point for the new position, which I hope to have filled relatively quick, and we'll close it out next month. So, I'm hoping to give that person direction to evaluate and report back on, based on their expertise, and then, you know, they're going to dialogue with, I said on the resilient Woods Hole initiative, that, that group, and tons of expertise in the community, and they're going to be leveraging that. Have the new coastal resiliency specialists review and evaluate the pathway, the surfway, Surf Drive pathway, and report back. And that's a clear direction. That's, Select Board telling me to tell the new coastal resiliency specialist, consider and evaluate that pathway.
And it's going to be timely, because this is already in the works, so we're going to have to hurry up.
And that's what goes into the strategic plan.
That's what I wrote down.
That's what I'm looking for.
That's what you're saying. I got it.
So, this time next year, or hopefully before then, but this time, as we updated the plan again, we checked, we put that in the completed box, the new position, it's been on board for a year now, has evaluated that, and maybe have already given some recommendations, but at least we know it's been done. Otherwise, the plan just sits on the shelf.
Right, and that's what people want to see. I think people want to see movement with respect to the plan and what's going on down there.
And then where we come in next, is there, if we choose a pathway, for instance, that says we're going to elevate the road three feet in three years, and then keep a contingency plan for in another 30 years, it's going to have to be another three feet, and then maybe a offset new location, because the sea's going to continue to rise, according to all science conceives. So, we have to do the cost-benefit analysis and say, is it really worth it to put in that much money?
Right.
Or should we just cut our losses now and walk away?
And how much?
Which is what the resiliency committee pretty much predetermined, that investing in the beach is probably not wise and not sustainable.
Well, and I, and I understand that. How much are we going to, how much money are you going to put to fight Mother Nature?
Right, exactly.
Right? Look at what they did on the, I know, was it, I can't remember the town that spent $750,000 to all kinds, or somebody on the...
South Shore.
Yeah. And they put all that money, and then in two storms, it was gone. And it was a, you know, so, I do think we have to think about that as well.
Well, that's why you can't just use sand.
Right. But, but I, I just wonder, so, I'm not, I'm not against this plan at all, and I think they make some really good points. I just want our person to evaluate it as well and give this board direction.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay. Are we good with 10 and 11? Anything else, Heather, on Surf Drive report? Do you want to separate that out?
No, we've already been talking about the Surf Drive report.
Okay. Let's go on to the housing production plan. And I think that was Heather, it may have been Bob as well, but...
And I think we, to, to my thinking, we, we hit on that this morning, that Mike and we were saying that staff will take a look at the housing production plan and the strategic plan and come back with an aligned set of goals, right?
Because the housing, the, the number-one priority on the strategic plan, housing, does not have any really actionable goals in it. So, yeah, I'm going to take those, the housing production plan goals, objectives, and literally roll them into a comeback September 9th meeting, or no, I'm sorry, the October meeting, I'm sorry, the October meeting, to, to have those as red-line additions. And it'll literally be that, take the verbatim from the housing production plan and roll it into the strategic.
Yep. But I mean, as you're doing it, and I know, I know Jed is looking at it and more, the implications of the new legislation that we just passed, you know, signed by the governor with respect to affordable housing, that, that bill, how it deals with, you know, a number of different issues, in particular, accessory dwelling units.
Jed has mentioned it.
Yeah. So, and, and, you know, I was actually reading something this morning, there's a lot more to it than just accessory dwelling units by right in residential areas. There's stuff on merger of lots now, you know, the, the whole zoning concept of lot mergers is no longer with respect to lots, I think, 10,000 square feet or less, they won't, they won't lose their ability to develop them as a result of common ownership or merger. I mean, there's a number of things in that, in that law that may need to find its way into the discussion on the housing production plan.
And I know you're exactly right. And I know KICOT Commission, I just sent through a webinar on their housing plan, adopting, encouraging local municipalities to adopt the housing plans, you know, standardize...
Yeah, the standardized six, six models for the ADUs, I know, we talked about that.
To reduce permitting costs and, and, and reduce the top...
For the seasonal communities, you know, and how we're going to respond to that, or are we going to respond to that? You know, there's, there's a lot that I think, as we develop, as we look at the production plan, we're going to have to take that...
It's going to have to change.
Take that into consideration, that's all I'm saying.
Do you think the governor agrees with the Falmouth enterprise? Is there ideas?
Anything else? Afternoon, I'm fast. Anything else from the board? So, one board member made a comment about doing workshops a little bit more frequently. I don't think that's a bad idea. So, I'm just going to ask you guys to just think about that.
Can we use the way the forecast is determined, please?
Sure.
We could, we could come up in December, January.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing else to do, right? Yeah. Okay.
No, I think this has been a very productive meeting. I think it's, it's a good opportunity to have some good discussions without the, without the time constraints of, you know, the two-hour select board meeting that has 30 items every week to address.
Exactly.
Mike, thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, very nice.
Oh, thank you.
So, yes, you can schedule, you know, and I'll throw dates out or whatever ahead of time.
So, more frequent, but maybe a more condensed, more streamlined, but what do you, you talk, you talk offline?
Yeah, we'll talk offline. We'll come up with, with just a couple more. I, I just, I do find them helpful. I do feel like we can, we can talk more in-depth about some things. I'm not trying to add more time to your schedules. I do find them really helpful. So, we can talk about it. I know...
It's definitely, it's definitely difficult trying to, trying to get all these topics, categories in within five hours, and then obviously, we could do right past that on the first item, and then have to make...
What's like herding cats?
Well, it's just a lot of discussion that has to occur before you can land out.
Right.
Did you see yesterday that the Commonwealth revoked the licenses of 500 and something commercial truck drivers?
Why?
Because they had two or more moving violations, and there's an old rule on the book that says, two, two violations and you lose your license. So, in one day, they knocked 540 guys out of the job, so that's going to be affecting...
In the Commonwealth?
Warriors probably have something to do with that.
Of course they have.
No, not enough to do with it.
One less comment I wanted to make.
Of course they do.
Doug, Doug reminded me, because I'm looking at it, I included in your package, it was attached to the...
It's just maybe taken...
It was attached to the 11-by-17 Capitol Plan. Peter McConerty and Edwin Rivera are fleet manager, just brought to my attention yesterday. The state regulation that effective January 1st, 2025, sorry. We're not going to be able to see, well, purchase and register in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, anything, any, any future trucks, like the think-large rolling stock, like the Mack trucks, we're going to have to be zero emission, we're not going to be able to register them in Massachusetts. It's part of, part of, I don't know if it ties into a specific, oh, the CARV Act, Advanced Clean Truck. Anyway, you have the right up in front of you. The implications are many. It's going to basically, you can buy a used vehicle that's not zero emission, so you can imagine that's going to drive the price of used vehicles to the roof.
Well, there's also a law that you can't, you can't do that anymore, rebuild all the trucks now because of the DEF.
Because we're looking, yeah, we're looking at different options, lease options. I don't think there's going to be many, unfortunately, so we're, Falmouth and the other municipalities are struggling with the impact of this and what it's going to mean. But I guess, my other comment is, other places I've managed, you know, our, our association, when the legislature is in session, legislator is in session, brief on potential statutes and bills and whatnot that will have a negative impact.
I don't remember hearing anything.
This was an omnibus.
Yeah, pushing into electric vehicles for, for big trucks.
This has, this has a lot of implications for, for towns.
There's a lot of stuff being pushed out, they are not aware of.
And, you know, whether municipalities should be, should be exempt.
Folks, I could...
We're looking to buy an electric fire truck.
That's...
We already had a problem with our electric police fleet.
Yeah.
Not sustainable.
Well, you know, we've got a $350,000 salt spreader, new, because it has to be replaced as the one currently has fallen apart. We can't, according to this, we're not going to be able to register it in the Commonwealth, because it's not, to my knowledge, they don't sell electric zero-emissions, it's a zero-emission salt spreader.
So, let's buy a piece of property in vain and house them there.
Yeah, let's start development.
That's my...
I just have one more to talk about.
Thank you, welcome, Jake.
Thanks, Brian. The other thing, Mike, is I want to thank you for bringing DEIE back to the forefront and putting it into the strategic plan.
Were you officially...
Thanks, Ellie.
What?
I can motion to adjourn.
I don't think we have, do we have to officially adjourn? I don't think so, do we?
Okay.
Well, make a motion.
I'm adjourned.
Just to cover it.
I'm adjourned.
I'm adjourned.
You're already adjourned.
Scott already adjourned.
John already adjourned.